All right, thank you gentlemen for coming. I'll open the second workshop budget. It's one o'clock. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Here Lord, thank you for another wonderful day. Thank you for allowing us all to gather here. Continue to watch over us during this meeting. Allow us to make the best decisions, possible decisions for the county of Amelia and help to continue to move the county forward. Amen.
All right gentlemen, I think we had a productive day yesterday. A lot of information, a lot of things to consider. You have a sheet in front of you. That was provided is some of the um. Those extra funds we were talking about yesterday. It shows the cash proffer balance and the decal road fee balance. After checking in on the E nine one, one, I think that was mentioned yesterday. This is explained to me, that's an in-house revenue that stays at the sheriff's. So, but these other two can be used for other funds. The CDBG program fund was explained that it is something that was tied to with some housing upgrades. And plumbing upgrades. And I think those funds are reimbursed from the homeowner if I understood it. That's really not something we can tap. That is there to assist somebody if they have a plumbing need. Really didn't, we can't find an answer for the Amelia County AM radio partners. We're still looking on that one, but that's two of them on there are what is possibly fair gain during budget process. So we got a little bit of time this morning for our first person comes in. I think Josh had a brief information session he wanted to give us.
Yes sir. So I have updated the workbook with some of the items that we had talked about. Yesterday during the workshop, that has been provided as an updated workbook. You'll see some of the figures changed, but we're pretty much in line with where we were. And if y'all have any questions with that, I'd be happy to answer them. But that's, that's the only update that I had.
I think it kind of dropped to the, the main figure, the deficit we're in, it dropped out by about thirty thousand.
Roughly, yes sir.
Okay, but it does not include like the updates for the capital improvement and things like that?
No. Is that all Josh?
Yes sir, yes sir.
Any general discussion? Y'all want to have before our first person gets here?
Chairman, there's one thing in the current budget I'd like to throw out to everybody. We've got a. Ultraviolet, ultraviolet upgrade budgeted for the wastewater treatment plant. That project hasn't started yet. But since in the past month, we've had a, I think he calls it a PLC go down, which is the computer control. Of the entire system. It's caused us to have to record flows manually and some different things. Daryl is supposed to have a, somebody come in this week. I guess it's from Kruger to possibly fix it, the computer motherboard or whatever they're gonna replace. If that doesn't work, Daryl is gonna ask to be able to switch, swap the programs. He had a PLC on the docket for another year or two. We'd like to go ahead and do PLC first. I asked him if it was critical and he said, it's getting close to that. Apparently there's a dual system. One of them's down, so we don't have any redundancy. And it could be if we don't get fixed properly this week, that we come to you and say we'd like to swap the projects. There's more money budgeted than, the UV was more money than the PLC, so we won't have to have supplemental appropriation to get it done. And you probably hear that at your next board meeting.
Josh, I had a question I forgot to ask yesterday. Under departmental expenditures, there's one. Guess it's county CO slash city operated institutions.
Yes sir.
I have a guess, but I'd like for not guess. So what, what is that referring to?
That is the local contributions that we make to organizations, real organizations, which is page twenty-six of the report.
Then what's regional org contribution?
It's regional jail institutions.
Okay, because there is a regional org contributions that matches what you're referring to. So this is code zero three three two hundred. It's like the middle. The middle of, the reason I ask, and I think Taylor may be right, is because it's up fifty-one percent.
That's the reason, right? It might be another component in it, but the majority of it is regional jail. It's this right here.
Oh yeah, yes sir. I apologize. I wasn't finding my place there for a second.
You're fine.
Yes, that, the bulk of that is the Piedmont Regional Jail and a couple other contributions we do as well. But the, the Piedmont Regional Jail, I believe was one point two of that, was their request. And I can open up that detail for real quick.
What, what I know about it is. They want to do some CI capital improvements up there and they. Assess each county, their share of it. And it was presented to the finance committee last month. Which consists of the county administrators. And I would expect I'd hear something next month when we go to a regular meeting, what the other localities think about it.
Yeah, it was a large request. I knew we got that information.
Is that um.
Somewhere I saw it. Rather large jump.
So then for the juvenile detention, does juvenile detention fall under that same line?
It does.
Okay, so where are you, is that where you're accounting for majority of this board committed to spend? Was it five hundred and some thousand on the upgrades there?
It was four hundreds.
Okay.
It's two different things.
Right, and that's what I'm asking. And that's what I'm asking with the second one. Where is that reflected?
That's coming out of this year's budget.
When was that decision made? Because when we voted, there was no decision. At the vote in the meeting, it was intentionally, it was specifically said, there was no decision whether we would pay lump sum over years, et cetera. So how was the decision made without coming back to the board?
The discussion was there was going to be no money borrowed, so it would have to be paid when the bill came due.
Right, and they offered us options of filling it out over five years.
That was borrowing the money. That, that was acquiring debt. And I think one of the counties. Maybe one of the counties decided to stretch it out, and I believe everybody else just agreed to pay it.
So agreement, but didn't come back to the board. Just, I mean, be clear, that was not decided in a board meeting.
I think it was decided.
I thought it was clear, we won't go have a debt service.
I will pull it back up then. That sounds perfect. Y'all specifically said you would bring it back at board meeting and budget meetings to decide how and when to pay for it. I'll find the recording tonight, make a note of it.
I think the funding that goes to the Piedmont, the juvenile detention center, that's in that line item. That is probably our usage. That's where it comes out. We pay hundred and twenty-five dollars a day or something like that for every resident that we have in there. And that's, that's the line item that that. Usage comes out of.
Any other questions, comments?
Do you think we need to, the loggers and far barrier with the land use. We do probably need to put them on next month's agenda, meeting agenda, and give them some kind of final answer or closure. You know, make a decision one way or the other for both of those. They both have been coming for a while.
To be fair, we gave the loggers a firm answer within, within the past two years. They came back.
Well, that, this is true. At least I believed we did.
Oh, I actually, I was chairman then, I specifically wrote it on behalf of the board and sent it, but they can keep asking and that's their prerogative. I just. I like to give an update, but let's not assume that'll conclude anything.
Did they come up with any answers on the proffers and the decal usage or limitations?
There's an email chain going back and forth, Brady and Danielle.
I, I'm sure just. Knowing about what the, that there's why they're created, they're probably in line with the categories we want to use them for, but.
I think they have scheduled a telephone call. I believe that's what I saw this morning.
I don't think they're here yet.
Anything else? What about um. The, we, normally every year we discuss the people that we, the nonprofits and stuff that we give money to. I mean, did everybody look at that list yesterday or?
They did.
We can go over that if y'all want to.
It looks pretty basic. The free clinic has got quite a considerable. Jump request from three thousand to ten thousand, but I know they're due. We've only, this is only.
Which free clinic? Because there's two.
The Palatine.
Okay, because we're also paying for the farm pole one as well as.
The free clinic for Palatine, that's the one that came and presented a couple months ago and we found out that they actually have quite a few.
They had, they had the data to bag, which I, I like to see that. I'm still, I'm, I'm, I asked a couple of years ago, this Blackstone area bus, do any Amelia citizens use this thing? I, I've seen the bus. You can't miss it. But I see it in Blackstone. I don't see it in Amelia.
Oh, I definitely see it in, I definitely see it in Amelia. It comes down, but I don't know how many people are riding it, so seeing it.
How many Amelia people are using this versus?
Seeing it doesn't mean I have any idea.
Because it brings other people here.
I would like to see a number from them stating how many people from Amelia they actually are. One of the things they do is they haul folks to the dialysis center and that. I think that's probably what I hear more than anything.
Oh, they do?
That is where.
So they pick up the baby people and take them, okay.
I think they have to hit the route somewhere, but they have dialysis patients.
Well then, that's understandable then.
Ten thousand dollars is a lot of uh. What do you call her? When you call the people who get a ride now? Uber, yeah, you could do a whole lot of Ubers for ten thousand dollars, I would think.
The, and about while we on that subject, we have the FFA foundation here and it's all zeros till last year. They got. Five hundred dollars and this year they back to zero. I, I would like to keep at least five hundred to them. I mean, that, that's a good cause for them kids and all and.
And they're always willing to help.
Oh, yes, yeah. Let's look at them, I mean, because they are a good service to the community. These young people, they learn so much in there about helping people and leadership in the community.
Community service and leadership, yeah.
I see MedFlight has gone up in price. For years, they were very low for the service they provided.
Right.
And they are the only, helicopter doesn't charge for transport.
Yeah, any way you look at it, it's a good deal.
That's probably gonna have um.
There is more than just MedFlight, right?
Yes.
Yes, the other one.
I mean, I don't know about it, but hopefully I'll never have to, but.
Two out of, two out of Charlottesville is two, at least two, maybe. It's one out of Petersburg. One out of Johnson Willis and one out of the MCV.
And you pay for those.
Yeah, they call your insurance.
Do they? Okay, okay, I got you.
The unfortunate thing is when we call for a helicopter, we don't know.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have chores. So Brady, Jeff and Danielle are gonna talk tomorrow between eleven and two. They've scheduled a call to talk about the. Proffers and that other. See, what was the other thing related to that?
The decal.
Decal, yes.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Oh, we have another meeting tomorrow?
Their meeting.
Oh, their meeting, oh.
Danielle and Jeff are gonna visit with Brady about this.
What y'all's feeding on the steps. We just converted the Madeline's house funds to steps for twenty-five thousand. Looking, they're asking for fifteen this year. Do we cut that back a little bit and eat some of that twenty-five?
Won't ask for anything this year since we just gave them twenty-five.
Well, she's on the agenda for today, so at two thirty to talk to us.
I agree with some, we don't give them a good lot of chance.
I think the difference, I will hear, but I think Dexter, the difference was they were gonna still ask for their, what they've historically done, like normal. They weren't coming back to ask for the new, the kind of replacement for Madeline's house until they'd gotten that designation. Because they're, they're lacking the state designation for that, so. They've got two groupings of services to differentiate.
I mean, steps does do a lot of good stuff for them. Unfortunately, they, their priority is to hire handicapped people who can't get a job somewhere else. How much, it does have people from Amelia, but it's like we've talked before. Prince Edward gets the majority of it, then Nada Way is probably second. I mean, I'm just guessing, I know Prince Edward does, and then we're probably about third, like we are on almost everything. I'm up there, we're running third.
About where we are with PSR too.
Yeah, and everybody, then you got a whole list under us too, so.
Josh, do you have that change for the FFA foundation?
Five hundred dollars, add that to it. Yes sir.
I see somebody walked in is.
That's Ms. King.
Ms. King?
Yes sir.
How you doing, Ms. King? Would you like to go a little early? Yes ma'am.
Hello, I am Tracy King. I'm the court service unit director. Here in Amelia and. Am I ready? And my budget request pretty much remained the same in regards to our supplies. The telephone service, our telecommunication is noted at two thousand. The mileage is two, travel mileage is two fifty. Our biggest item on here is the BJ triple CA and the first time offenders program. Because that generally works with our young people who are in trouble with us. And instead of sending them to court, we try to offset that a little bit in our office. So the BJ triple CA program and the first time offenders program provide community service and group work, individual and group work for them. This particular cost here pays for salary, and that is to Ms. Brink Johnson, who provides those services for us. Office supplies is five hundred dollars a year that we wanted to maintain that. And some furniture and fixtures. We need file cabinets, a few file cabinets because case loads are rising, so we're just asking for the three fifty there.
And just to confirm, your, your total budget, your request is nineteen seven seven four, that's what we're showing?
Yes.
I'm sure, case, I don't doubt you on that. Do we have, we have, I know we have inventory in the county of surplus equipment. I don't seem, I know if we have, sorry, I can only see you, Josh. I'm not really expecting you to honestly answer, but. Have, I would just say make sure we check that first.
Check the surplus, okay.
Daryl. I have no working idea whether we have them or not, but we do.
I would definitely check.
Yeah.
In an email I sent to Mr. Warhol, I was asking whether our telephone system is kind of outdated. And we are getting a lot of complaints about not being able to be reached. And I didn't know if you all had a mechanism or something in place that we can kind of upgrade the telephone system or new phones. Because we only have one line and then when that is down, we don't have a way to transfer where it goes busy and we're having some difficulty in the building.
Actually, the contract should have just been signed for new phone system.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
Well, it's not just for your county one.
County, county.
Okay, I was like, okay, I thought.
No, no, you're just a beneficiary.
I don't know the particulars of how many phones you'll get. It's all been worked out and it should be.
Okay.
Should be in the works.
Thank you.
Good things come to those who wait.
Yes, yes. And my other request, which is a long shot, but I'm gonna try to, so you don't know unless you ask. Is there a, an available county vehicle maybe one day a week? That my staff can possibly use to do home visits to see our young people?
The sheriff's office just surplus. A few.
Yeah, sure.
And there are some, there are some that are not allocated to individual people, right Taylor?
That's correct. We have a, we have a kind of a motor pool.
Okay.
I would have to check to see if. If you and your staff could use it without some changes to the insurance, because obviously you're not a county employee, but certainly something could be looked into.
Okay, and if it's an extra cost, we will manage, because I'm paying mileage now, you know, it's like.
It's still the cost of the county, I mean, you know, for citizens of the county.
Yes, and.
If you just need to add some drivers to the policy, that should be fairly sure.
Okay.
That's a great, a couple of great requests, by the way. Those are awesome things to just look at.
And, and you know, we're just trying to kind of be able to be sure that we can see our people, our young people. Trying to kind of deter the court process a little bit. We're doing a lot of home visits, a lot of diversions, which means we are handling some things in-house on our own. We use the BJ triple CA program as well, because our numbers are skyrocketing for court. Some of the use of the vehicle also will be helping with our occupancy concerns. Because we have some young people who are not attending school, so the PO or the probation officer, I'm sorry, would go out and check to make sure things are okay. And also kind of get them and take them to school. So we're just trying to be able to service our kids as best we can and our families.
Get them on a straighten there, so we don't have to worry about them when they get older.
Yes, yes.
Is your office in the Bethel building or over in the courthouse itself?
The Bethel.
The Bethel, okay. I, I was just trying, that's the group I was thinking, sir. Thank you.
I was getting ready to ask the same thing, because I didn't really know where your office was.
Yes sir.
I wish all the presentations was that good, because I mean, it's, it's not super complicated for what she's asking for and it's not really.
I try to be very simple.
Yeah. Keep it simple.
I have five of these, six of these.
You have a legitimate, good cause to ask for it, and that's what we want to hear.
Thank you.
Instead of just throwing numbers, I hear, what do you need it?
Right, right, and I know.
You're on the ball.
When we're talking money, it's, it's fair to you guys to share what we need it for. And how it would just not benefit my office, but the community, and that's our goal. Thank you.
Right boss.
What do you say?
I'll see you tomorrow, huh?
You will.
I've got all my meetings this week.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. King?
No sir.
Thank you ma'am. You got any more questions for us?
I do not. I'm gonna keep it where I got it, good. Yes, I'm not gonna mess that up at all. I appreciate you guys' time, thank you.
Minutes definitely said, I'll pull the recording too.
Well then, we need to handle that again.
Sounds like y'all did. Just out of the public profession, but.
We can put that on the agenda for next month and we'll make sure we, where y'all want to pull the funds from. I think it was discussed that we might pull it from the CIP. That was a discussion, was it?
I don't know. I mean, it was said a minute ago, you already made the decision to pay it out of the current budget, so where were the, where are the funds coming from, Taylor?
Yeah, we can look down through the line items and see where the areas there are some additional funds coming from. The project was approved. It was said we weren't going to borrow the money, so.
Yeah, I remember not borrowing money.
That's clear.
Borrowing money wasn't discussed in our board meetings. That must have been discussed at the jail.
No, I think it was discussed in the board meetings that we were not. No, I think it was discussed in the board meetings that we were not uh.
Cause we got the presentation of how much it would cost us over the years and that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't know if it was a voted on item or not. Now, see, you, it, it depends, but it was discussed not borrowing money to fund that.
We would have had to brought you another set of paperwork, another set of documents, public hearings and everything if we were going to borrow, so.
Yeah.
That's why that didn't happen.
Well, I think we discussed about finding some money that's just sitting there not being used to apply to that instead of. Let's let it sit there.
Well, let's add that to the agenda. We'll just, we'll just clean it up at next month.
I'm sure we've got the surplus. From this year. Handle that. I guess what I'm confused about is so regardless of whether it was in our meetings or not, if the agreement was taken out of current funds, why is it in the budget for next year? Because when I asked if that was included in the upcoming year's budget. The answer was yes. So I don't think, I think the key is we don't want it in both places. That's all. That's what I'm trying to get to, so.
If if I said yes, I misunderstood the question. That that money.
You and you, yeah.
That money is not in the budget for sure.
Okay. All right, well, I'd like your, I'd like a detailed breakout of that jail item then, since that's one of our largest budgets. And we're not planning to have any discussion on it. One of our top five largest budgets.
Do you have the component of that line item? Line item, uh, three, three, two hundred.
Regular contribution.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to lay my hands on right now.
There you go.
Oh, it didn't have to be right this minute either, Josh. I wouldn't, I didn't, I don't, I don't mean it was spot. I just meant in general.
Yes, we, we've got thirty minutes, though. It'd be a great time to do it.
All right, so how did we come up with this? The question is, how did we come up with this? One million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars. What are the components of that?
Sure. Um, let's see. We have a thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ten dollar contribution to the Piedmont Juvenile Detention Center, budgeted seventy-six hundred dollars to. A line item that's labeled outside monitored care. Um, that seems like a consistent um, uh, contribution. Um, the one point two million dollars. Um. Came from the doc, this document, which is the.
That's the projected, this is the projected budget that the Piedmont Regional Jail has issued.
So are they be, are they the whole one point three two six?
No, sir.
They, they had one million, two hundred thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for the year. Uh, from Amelia for the year. That's what they.
So they have, I mean, they're, that's almost the whole.
Uh-huh.
And what's, and the other one is that. Coordinator, what was?
Some kind of outside.
Uh, the line item is labeled outside monitored care. And the second item, the thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, which would be the the amount after that would be the Piedmont Juvenile Detention Center.
So additional information on the regional jail, on the, the initial budget they put out. They had a nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollar charge for Amelia. Charges for services. The way we came up with the uh, residual was they did not balance the budget. The balance, the budget was. Short, so the deficit, one sixth of the deficit is Amelia. And once you, once you take the deficit that the published budget had, plus Amelia's. Official place in there, it came up to one million, two hundred thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars.
That's another one then, to your point Dexter about some counties getting off really well, so we pay the same amount.
Yeah.
That Prince Edward, not away and others.
But we don't have really a gripe about it because our usage is between fifteen and seventeen percent. So whether it's six, whether it's sixteen percent because we're one sixth or we're paying on our usage. We drew the lucky straw there.
We did.
The Prince Edward is the one that's got the tough luck. Because not only do they have a bigger usage, they got more population. But you'll find significant number of the kids or the crime from Cumberland happens in the town of Farmville. So Farmville and Prince Edward are paying for the.
Oh, that's where it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah, but it would be, it would be significant concern if we had either a a larger usage up there or a lower. But because our usage is right at sixteen percent, it really doesn't cause a lot of heartburn one way or the other. For us.
That's true.
Yeah. We had sixteen point one percent of the usage in the fourth quarter.
But that goes up and down constantly if it's. Doesn't know how the judge feels at the time by sending them away.
I think David can, Mr. Phelps can tell you, one of the things the regional jail is trying to do is gather more federal inmates. Because the federal government pays more than what it costs us to house them, so if we can keep a significant number in there. And keep them on, keep them under control, that helps with the deficit that is budgeted for.
He brought that up when we made the tour up there, Todd and I, that they, they make, they make some money off of federal.
Mm-hmm.
And that they wanted to keep that going because that was, they were making some money on that. I mean, not big time, but it was good money.
I think the ones that work out best for us come from the U S Marshal Service in North Carolina.
Mm-hmm.
We tried the D C. It didn't, didn't work very well, but if, it seems like. The way our operation is set up, if we can get them out of North Carolina, that, that, that the easiest ones for us to manage.
Remember, we asked him, what's all them vehicles down there for? He said, go to North Carolina, getting them inmates.
And they built those new uh, stands too.
Yeah, yeah.
That's that.
Now you brought.
Towers. Yeah, the rundown old plywood stands and towers they had out there.
Like Starlight thirteen Hogan zero stuff out there.
Yeah.
We, when I first started going, we were averaging right around fifty-eight to fifty-nine residents. We are down to about thirty, thirty, I think last month was like thirty-four residents, so. People, people act right, that leaves more room for the ones we make money.
Oh, yeah. Another thing that's hurt us, and I think we're, we're certainly, we may be out from under it, but. We haven't been under the jurisdiction of the federal court system for three years now, I guess. We've been punished by the feds because of uh, mishandling inmates. We had an inmate or two death. And we didn't lose in court. We had a, we were subject to a consent decree. And the consent decree meant that there was going to be somebody representing the judicial system that had regular access to the jail. And he was saying, this is what you're going to do. This, this is what you will do. So we have upgraded our medical facility and. Worked on some different uh, facility type things around to stay in better graces with the. Federal judges, because if, if they say you're going to do something, it's really not, not a whole lot of choice and none.
Well, Mr. Townsend, when he was giving us a tour, it looked like he was on a pretty tight ship up there. Yeah, it was almost like military decision in there when he walked down.
It looked like he had low respect.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's certain.
He came to us from the state prison system. He had probably thirty years of service there. He lived in Prince Edward, were on their board of supervisors. And I guess he was able to retire from the state and. He, he got some, there was an incentive for him to leave the state prison system and come to work for us.
Does good job.
No complaints on that, hon.
All right, what else?
I think we, don't want to hit it, hit the rate, the cost of living raises. Looks like the states will do, they did a biannual ten percent last year, but there'll be another five percent this year. I think last year we, we did the five percent for non-comp board employees, so that kind of kept everybody on the same raise limit. I think it's requested a seven percent, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, the COLA uh, was reduced. It doesn't look like the Commonwealth has agreed to do the seven percent. Um, so for the sake of getting the numbers as accurate as possible, we don't know that we will get any update in between now and when we have to advertise for the public hearing. So we reduced the COLA from seven percent to five percent, which is part of the biannual budget at this time.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Kind of what we did last year. And that's just the non-comp board employees.
The comp board, yeah.
Because they get the five percent.
Yeah, and it splits the ones that are half paid. It all comes up to five percent cost of living.
Yeah, we keep it the same it does. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just let's, we had to do a follow-up meeting last year to clarify what David just, the last part of what David just said, so I think that's really important. If somebody's split like portion of their pay, and then we have too many people like this, portion funded by county and portion funded by comp board. They get the five percent on their comp board portion from the state, we still get the five percent. So every employee is a total five.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We discussed that last year, but then we had to go back again, and so.
It's gotten really messed up in years.
Yeah. Best.
And then the state was late last year.
Yes.
I think that was a.
That was the other.
Sixty-nine hundred dollar difference.
Yeah, that's a good point. So did they say late as in last year, even though the budget started on July first for the state, they didn't?
They didn't count August.
Yeah, something like that. It was like a month to six weeks later. Did they say?
Not to my knowledge.
Then effective?
Yeah, not to my knowledge. I believe that this would be effective to at one, okay.
It's still the same budget as last year, though. They were just talking about doing a bonus of two percent. The state's budget's the same this year and was last year, so it's all identical.
Yeah.
They're just talking about doing a two percent bonus on top of the five that they did.
Was it total of ten?
Well, be careful, because, yeah, five last year, it's a new five this year.
Yeah.
So it was a question of an additional, but it is, they didn't do the five for this year yet. It doesn't take effect till Ju- July first.
When the budget starts, yeah, when the new year starts.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's already approved. It's a done deal. There was a two percent.
And it did.
Add one they were talking about, but who knows what happens with that year.
Two percent plus the bad.
Makes seven, if they do the two percent.
I think Josh is right.
Yeah, I think we stick with the five. I don't need it.
Happen.
Especially after the, the education. Miscalculation and all that. I think it's gonna sit back the place it where they're at. So I think we're safe if, if anybody else.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm afraid, I'm gonna talk about that C I P item that's still in there with um, with the thirty-five thousand or whatever.
Yeah, they are coming, so we can. I don't know what I did here.
How much is health insurance went up?
Zero.
Last year to this year?
Zero percent.
Zero.
Zero percent.
Come on.
Couldn't believe it. We were expecting a ten percent to fifteen percent, but the number came back negative.
Yeah, I know Josh pulled there.
Yeah.
I had a question about animal control, and I don't know where. What I did with it. We were being charged, it looked like on the line item with animal control. For those A Paul license plates. It was something in the budget for animal control for A Paul license plates. Why are we paying for that?
I think he's pulling it up now.
I got what the, nose look in the truck.
I thought it was revenue we'd get from, yeah, from the license.
But it was in the cost.
Yeah, it exact, it is that.
That doesn't make sense.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
I agree with your question.
Um, yes, uh, the, there is a line item for A Paul uh, under the expense account. For the animal control. It looks like there has been a amount budgeted there at, on the expense line year to year, and the request this year um, was five hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can look at the revenue side and see if it offsets. But it it is, it looks like it is something that is budgeted for on the expense side year to year.
I just didn't know what it was for. I would think it would, it would be a generator, not a cost.
If you have to buy into the program.
I was, I, it was just a question I had.
I think it's an offset. I think that money is going to come in as a grant, and they're gonna, they don't know what they're gonna spend it on, so it's probably listed. On the expense side as that. I think that's what we're gonna find. Because we do get paid for those.
Yes, yeah.
It's probably not labeled well. It's labeled spending the money from the license plates, not that you're spending one license plate, but yeah.
Definitely working to it. Yeah, those are the treatments. They almost need to be in a certain color, like green, like, you know, if it's offset.
Mm-hmm.
Just, you know.
Make it simple.
Right.
And then I had somebody call me today and said that in Parks and Rec. They need to look at their fees. They said they're fifty dollars a year to join the waiver. I don't, I don't know what should they.
Well, we've got all this fee, and that's a great point, Todd, because I was glancing those at the beginning of the meeting. You know, Daryl's the only person that's come in and talked about changes to his costs and fees and.
Their fee schedule was on the packet he gave us yesterday.
It's, it's in here too. It's in here too. Everybody's are in here. Um, I think there needs to be some wholesale. Changes to this. I mean. Quite a few of these are not covering true costs.
The building department said the fee increase we did last year got them. Where they need to be.
Yeah, they're golden.
Yeah, Holly worked, Holly worked hard with them on that last one, but um.
Anyone stand out that y'all wanna possibly increase?
Well, the one they were complaining to me about was the gym, and I don't know anything about it. They said at the Y, it's like sixty, eighty bucks a month. But I don't know how we rate at the Y.
Oh, well, we're.
You know, we don't have a pool and all that stuff.
Yeah, and see, that includes babysitting service.
Yeah.
For a single adult, I, I think it is like sixty a month, but there's a lot of benefits.
Yeah.
That you're not gonna get.
No, but fifty a year, I mean, is a pretty dramatic difference.
It's fifty a month.
Oh, is it?
They could be fifty, no, for here.
Here.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm thinking monthly, not.
No, I think he said it was like seventy-five or eighty-seven or something a month at the Y, I don't know. As you can tell, I don't go there.
I mean, yeah, now that is a significant difference in the two.
A dollar, a dollar for the wait room. One dollar for the wait room to go use the wait room.
Well, they charge fifty a year now, here.
Yeah.
Is what I was told.
Yeah, but I'm saying to go to the wait room, they only charge you a dollar extra.
On here?
Oh, at the Y?
No, here.
It's adult wait rooms weekly, use three dollars a week. It's adult wait room monthly, use ten dollars a month.
Oh, a dollar a day?
Yeah, a dollar a day.
I see what you're saying now.
Yeah, it should be a higher, higher than that. What is a dollar now? Pack, a big pack of bubble gum?
So you don't pay a monthly fee then?
It looks like you.
You pay it a day as used.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, year round, you use thirty dollars per year.
Yeah, mighty cheap.
It's right, right below the.
Yep, ten dollars a month, thirty dollars a year, three dollars a week, a dollar a day.
I mean, we need to look at what, what you can get for your amount of money now, and that's, that's really nothing. I know some people got fixed income, can't pay a lot, but still.
But if we get too crazy on the, the.
I know.
The fee on this, I think we need to raise the age up.
Look, don't want to run no customers away.
Well, yeah, I don't wanna get crazy on raising it, I think, but I think you need, what we need to be seeing is over time, small increases, so that it kind of keeps up instead of not ever changing. And some of these seem, seem pretty reasonable, but.
Well, something to help off, offset some of this cost of new equipment they want.
Yeah.
You want me to get Glenn to bring an update as soon as he can, or an evaluation of his feeds as soon as he can?
See what he thinks.
Just see, see what it might be comfortable with. I mean, you know, uh, we, we don't wanna jack everybody. We're not here to do that, but we, we're here to try to keep updated on our equipment and all, and it was, where it's no drain on everybody.
I'm sure Glenn could give us that information. I do know Brady had mentioned taking up some of the advertising fees, but because the advertising rate has gone up, do we?
Yes, sir. There is one fee in the um fee schedule that is actually a new fee. Um, Brady, um, I believe it is the special exemption permit fee under the planning department. Um, we currently do not charge for um, that permit, and so it, there's a cost to us for advertising and having to go through the advertisements and everything. And Brady may be able to tell you better than I am, but based on what I heard from him, um, we're funding that bill and not getting the reimbursed for the advertisement fee that is associated with that special exemption permit. So he has added that in there um as a, a, a fee to offset those expenses to us.
But if, don't those have to be advertised before you can just start? That's the way Jeff had had us advertise fee changes before, so it's just that we need to be, uh, whatever the process is, we just gotta be careful.
Yes, sir.
We can't just start charging.
Mm-hmm.
So this fee in here right now is what he cha- wanted to change it to?
It's a proposed fee, yes, sir.
Just that one row?
Uh, yeah, that, uh, the other three were already, um.
Well, Taylor, in addition to uh Glenn, I mean, huge portion of the fees fall under utilities. I know Daryl talked about raising, you know, the rate, the rate, but there's a lot of other fees in here. I have no idea if they're. You know, right or not. It'd just be nice to know from Daryl, he looked at every fee within there, like.
He, I can get him to, to speak to that. We talked, we talked this week about it, he said if he got the increase in the, the uh usage charge, that he thought everything else was where it needed to be.
Okay.
But I can get him.
No, I mean, if he said that to you, then that's. I was just, I was, but happened to specifically be looking at hauled wastewater from domestic sources, I mean. So in the last four years at least, we haven't changed that, yet we know fees for, I mean, the cost for hauling and transportation have specifically gone up, so I have to kind of think the ten cent per gallon is probably not covering our costs if it did four years ago. And it's probably been longer than that, that's just, I can't miss it four years.
Yeah.
Discharge, you know, looking at discharge permits and things like that.
Okay, under, you know.
Accidental discharge, I mean.
Builder inspections.
Penalty.
Demolition, sixty-five dollars. I'm looking here on the fee schedule on builder, it's under builder inspection and it's demolition.
Yeah.
Sixty-five dollars.
Well, I talked to Jerry Wayne again, and he had Debbie run through and check all their uh fees.
Yeah.
I think this week, and he said that they're good from the changes we made last year.
Are they?
Yeah.
Are we in line with Chesterfield or?
The answer I got, where, where we needed to be for our county. Uh, we can't be but set, but so high and making.
I know that.
Profit off of it. He said we're, we're, after we changed that little bit last year, he said it put us right in line.
Okay.
They did a pretty wholesale set last year. That one makes me feel good. I, I brought it up last couple of years, so I'll, I'll do it again, and Stephanie was here, I think she'd argue with me on it again, which is okay, but I still think our dog tags and cattle tag fees are just really low, and you consider the cost that we have sent, we have as a county for animal control.
Yeah, but see, I think it's, everybody else charges. I don't know if it's a statement, they just think it's not, okay.
No, we looked, we looked at it before, the good, we've talked about that before, it was. And yeah, it was, well, no one else charges much, like, so they're gonna take their pets to another cow, I mean. It doesn't cover, it doesn't cover the fees that were, that are associated with it, and the point of the, of the tag fee is supposed to be for that.
How often do we get a after hour building inspection fee?
Limited. But it is, you, you will have to do it sometimes. But it's a very limited thing.
Well, um, there was an example recently Jerry Wayne had to go and do when the car ran into like the county grill.
Yeah, or something.
I wasn't thinking about that. I was thinking about something else, and now I understand.
He had, he was.
Now I understand. I was saying if somebody had to have her inspection done on a weekend or whatever, three seventy-five wasn't enough, but.
Yeah. That's the only example I can think of.
That is, that is maybe one in a million.
Yeah, but you, if they're that impatient.
Talking about.
Yeah, if they were that impatient, you're gonna pay for it.
No, sometimes it depends on when you can shut something down.
Yeah.
You know, like at a plant or something like that, hospital, but we don't really have that here.
I understand.
Couple of times with the fire department, we had major electrical issues, and David, there's one talking about.
Yeah.
You don't want the owners going back in the house, and we have called, and they'll come out there in the middle of the night and, and
Yeah.
Basically lock it down until we know that it gets inspected by our professional electrician, because sometimes you know the people are gonna go right back in there when you leave.
That's understandable.
And, um, so I, I knew, I knew probably two or three times, I've been on calls when we've done that, so. You, you know, it does happen, but it's more of a.
Just safety issue too.
More of a service than, than us to, you know, trying to profit.
I think somebody knocked uh front porch off Alexander Wingo's house about ten years ago. Richard had to go up and inspect that and.
Yeah.
They were going to remember when that happened.
Really? Yeah, that was.
Uh, Ms. Six, is that, I see you walk in. Are you ready for the library presentation?
I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the library.
You're welcome to sit there if you'd like, so whatever you're comfortable with.
You have any questions for me?
Not yet.
Okay.
Look like.
It's like your budget went down. If I'm looking.
I don't have an actual, I never saw a final one. I never saw one with all of the figures for uh salary in it, so. She's, this is, this is Jennifer Harris. She is the Chairman of the Board of Trustees.
It already starts, sorry.
You're running early, she just sat out.
No, I was like, oh, fine. Well, last time I came to schools were before me and.
I was trying to look for the page where library request is. You might have that page number.
All I have is a. Item number.
Seven three thousand is library administration.
We don't have any extra pages on, Josh.
Not on the library, no. Their, um, their particular um total request can be found on page seven. Their code is zero seven three zero zero zero.
That was tip it at all.
You can, you want, you can explain the, the decrease, that'd be nice to hear.
I, I would have to, I haven't, like I said, I don't know, it could have been in salaries, I'm not sure.
Uh, well, you mean decrease for what we're asking for? I thought it was up based on our math, so. That's weird.
Go, look through the line item real quick and see what changed between, uh, oh, uh, there's a big one, um. It looks like there was no request made for books and supply, uh subscriptions.
Books and subscription.
That's from the state.
From the state?
Yeah, that's one, that's.
That's our state funding.
Budget, but it comes from the state.
Right.
That is not the counties, county does not contribute to that at all.
So last year that was seventy-seven thousand nine hundred.
Nine, yeah.
We don't contribute to it, but it should be included in your budget request, correct?
It always has been, but it's like a, it's like, we don't really know what the number is until the state gives us the number.
Okay.
It's not a specific number every year. It changes.
Basically, my suggestion would then to be maybe trend what the past years have been and put a number in there for that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just a rough estimate.
Yeah, I was looking at.
And then, but on the funding side, then an equal.
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any other fund, the funding that you, from the state that you can think of, or that's principally material?
That's it.
Mm-hmm.
So that'll actually push up about twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought we went up a little bit.
The books, uh, the number we were given when we were sending things from the county was seventy-seven thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars. And that was last, I was, I guess, last year.
Okay.
That's what the state sent.
Did you have any salary decreases with the librarian?
No, not, not decreases. We're actually back to full staff now.
Okay.
Yes, um, she will start um that week of April sixteenth. We also hired circulation manager, and that person starts April first. And we just put an offer out for the part-time assistant, and if she accepts, or if she doesn't accept, we have a backup, but if she accepts, um, then we will be back to full staff, and so our, our salary should be back to where it was. I know we probably have.
You know, since Jill left at the end of September, it was her director's salary, you know, October, November, December, so. That was down.
Under budget for this year.
We, we, we should be under. We did pay the interim.
Right.
A certain amount, but it wouldn't cover the gap, the difference, no.
Right.
Um, but we, but that is, that's one reason I did wanna come, 'cause I knew, um, I wanted to tell y'all that we, we are back up to full staff now.
Good.
So we'll be able to open, like, we won't do it immediately, obviously, give the director some time to get situated, but we should be open like, back to full day Friday and Monday, um, hopefully.
I'm sure you said it, but you'll be back to full staff prior to July one?
Yes, yep, prior to, as of April fifteenth, week, sixteenth, we'll be back to full staff.
Hopefully.
Unless, yeah.
Unless someone.
Well, the part-time job would be the only one that would be questionable, but yes.
Josh, do you have a?
No, I was just saying that's good, 'cause as the board, last, for the last two years, I think we did some increase that's in staffing for the, for the purpose of extending the hours, so that's great to hear.
Yeah. And just a reminder, we still technically have one seat left on the board. Um, it's been open for a while, 'cause right now we have eight people, so usually.
Nine?
We need, we need an odd number. Typically, we don't have eight, like, sometimes if we have eight, we just have to. We haven't had the situation come up where all eight have been there, and we've had to, usually we have five or seven anyway.
They will.
Try to find somebody, you can't find volunteers.
I know, um, and.
You got anybody coming off that would get you to seven? 'Cause at, at one time we heard that y'all wanted to reduce the board.
We did. It used to be, it used to be two per district plus five at large.
We used to have, we had the largest board in Virginia for a while.
For the smallest.
So where do you want to be at?
Um, I mean, we could go to seven, I think, that would probably be okay. We can talk about it if somebody comes off. That's what we had been doing, was like, taking it down. Now we just, just one for every.
Every one down.
One per district.
Down from the twenty-two, I think it was, down to the nine by attrition.
Yeah, so yeah, we could discuss it and go back to seven. I mean, the problem is you have to have five for a quorum, and sometimes it's tough to get. Um, you know.
Tough to get five.
We usually have five.
Y'all could keep us, y'all could keep us informed when we need to appoint somebody.
Because, I'm just saying, if you guys know of anybody, um, I mean, I'll be honest, that's how I got appointed. Tommy Gleason literally knocked on my door one day and was like, you're gonna be a library board.
If this one got larger, are you?
I, I was district at that point, because I was out in Jetersville. When I moved into town, there was an at-large position open. And so I just transferred into the at-large position, and somebody took mine. Oh, the position open currently is at-large. Yeah, so technically, any of y'all, if you know somebody, um, so, we're, we're heavy on females right now, so. Tom Hagy is our only male, so not trying to be discriminatory, but if we could get some, you know. Um, but yeah, anybody, I mean, we'll, you know, I know we've had some folks show interest, but sometimes it's right now, we've, we've, we had a busy couple of months with library board, it's been meeting a lot, but now we should go back to our normal, every other month meetings. You know, so it should calm down a lot now. But just be thinking about it if y'all know anybody that you think might be good.
Your fee schedule good?
Yeah, I mean, we went through it pretty, um, line by line, two board meetings ago. And.
So does it, did y'all make that?
We did.
What we get, we can tell.
I know. We did make changes. Because like postal services, for example, we increased 'cause we're doing passports now, and those all have to be mailed.
Plus, there's a five percent increase in postage and in twenty-three, and who knows, this, this budget goes into twenty-four, who knows what twenty-four. So we did up the postal by five hundred dollars.
We upped.
Cool.
We upped advertising by two hundred dollars because, um, I mean, I don't, if you don't wanna hear this.
No, no, that's fine, just, I think it's two different things. So you're talking about your spit, you're talking about your budget line for, for that. That's great. That's abso- no, that's absolutely great. We're asking about your fee schedule.
I knew that. Gotcha.
Like, if you have a computer game.
I got you. Um, we don't charge fees for losing anything or not returning anything.
There's no uh more undue fees.
Yeah, we got rid of that years ago, so I'm not sure why that's.
Well, how about if you lose a computer game? And you don't return it, we eat it?
I don't need to check, I.
Computer games go out.
They do.
They do?
Yeah, video games do.
Well, you got it here, thirty dollar fee to replace it.
I know, we look silly, but I have something.
This was Jill.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we went fee free like years ago, and so I didn't realize that, huh, I didn't realize.
I did not realize we returned fees for anything.
A lot of operates.
Replacement fees maybe. I noticed there's no non-return fee, but that's interesting. I'll check into this, because. Yeah, I know we went, like, if somebody brings something late or doesn't return it, we went fee free, um, but I will ask.
Overdue fees.
Yeah, there's no more overdue fees I know for that, for sure.
That's the trend in libraries.
But I think if you lose a book or lose a game, you should have to pay for it.
Look into that.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, if that's the case, if I decide I want a video game, I can go to the library and get it and I got it for free.
I understand. I just honestly had not seen this.
Or a book.
I had not seen this. I need, I will check into that. Sorry. When you said fee schedule, I was like, what?
What is your largest increasing cost in the next year or year?
Probably just salaries on the whole.
Oh, other than salaries.
Other than salaries.
Other than salaries. Okay.
There were two things. Well, I would say telecommunications. And the reason for that is we got, the paperwork that we got from the county was as, what we had spent as of the end of November, which was five months in a year. And at that point in telecommunications, we had already spent ninety-four percent of our budget. So I actually tried to find out why, but I was working with Angela DeFria, who is, who was the interim director then, or acting director. And she did not know and she was going to ask Madison, but in the meantime, she has resigned. So the only thing I know is that, that the E rent has changed and the E rate got you, gotten it, were you able to negotiate better rates? So in two thousand twenty-one, we were at thirty-eight hundred dollars, which is what we went back to. So that one went from eighteen ninety to thirty-eight hundred. For that reason. And then programming also, I think we doubled the program.
Right, it went from eight hundred to six.
From eight hundred to sixteen hundred. And the reason for that was programming had, with COVID, back in, in two thousand nineteen, our programming, we spent eighty-three dollars on programming because we didn't have a community development librarian to do the programming. And then COVID came in, so there wasn't anything. So of course, that budget had gone down. But we felt that now that we do have a community development librarian and people are coming more and coming to the programs, we doubled that to sixteen hundred, which it was in twenty twenty.
Right. A lot of things went back to what they were before COVID.
Because basically before COVID. And plus, we knew we were getting a new director. Of course, when we did this, we didn't know who the director would be. And when, once we had a new director, they might have more ideas of things they wanted if we wanted them to have. We didn't want to have to stifle their creativity by not having money. But those were the two largest increases.
Nothing went up more than eight hundred dollars, yeah.
Office supplies went from one hundred to two thousand.
It was at one hundred dollars. I don't know why.
I don't know.
Was it?
Well, no, it was two thousand previously. We don't know why it went to one hundred.
Yeah, why in?
How would you possibly make it a year?
I know. So in the past, just so y'all know, in the past, the director did most of the line-by-line stuff.
Not us.
Not us.
Yeah.
This year, we kind of were like, so we tried to step in and say, okay, yes, it might have been that way during then, but that's not the case now.
And you don't want to know why it was one hundred. In fact, at the end of November, it was, our budget was over on that line item by six hundred percent. So we took it back to the number in two thousand twenty-one, which was two thousand.
Okay. Did you have anything to de- decrease more than normal? Or if there's such a thing as decreasing normal?
We left a lot the same. No, I mean, not everything. There were only, there were only nine line items other than salaries. Okay? There were only nine line items that we increased.
Yeah. And most were a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah. Advertising was two hundred. Post office was five hundred. Travel and convention, we, we doubled that.
From five hundred to a thousand.
To a thousand. And before COVID, that was a thirteen hundred. So we only took it to, you know, we, we took it to a thousand.
You have no control over them costs to increase that shit.
Yeah, a lot of it is just normal cost increase. And like postal services budget, for example, we, before we did passports, we really didn't use that. But now, I, I had no idea.
Have to mail off.
They, it's expensive to mail it off for the passports.
Josh, you had the final number for the request since we, we did some.
Yes, sir. If we add in, they're, they're trending about seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars in books and subscriptions. So if we factor in the worst-case scenario of eighty thousand dollars, their total request would be four eighty-three, one seventy-two, eighty-one. That is up roughly forty thousand dollars from the current year budget.
But that won't really.
But it'll get reimbursed.
I would say it won't really impact anything because you'll see the same, same increase on the revenue side.
Okay. And you go look into the fees for the CDs and the books and let's get that one handled.
With more or less, it's pretty flat, pretty much, yes, pretty flat. Let's do it. Very, yeah, very, very close to it. Well, he brother heard it and then, well.
We tried.
Made a good presentation. Appreciate it.
And I mean, I know we charge copies and all that. That's not a question. I know those are correct. It's just the replacement ones. I don't.
Well, and I think for the copies and stuff, if you just look at like.
Those are standard. Yeah, we, we, I know those are correct. I just don't know the replacement.
Yeah, I believe you that they're correct, but, but that lends up and based on all the price increases over years.
Does that make sense?
That's correct. I have no idea if it is or isn't.
Right.
Whatever you say, you know, but.
Yeah, I'll make sure.
Have y'all seen Amy's recent, we don't do folks come there and scan the library?
Yeah, we've had, we've actually started keeping stats, which I didn't bring with me because we weren't discussing the, like, CIP stuff. But they've been actually tracking, like, we were even tracking stats now on how many times we have to turn people away for like the meeting room. And we, we noticed just when we've been closed Fridays, we did interviews last, two Fridays ago. And we closed at one and the interview was like at two and so many people were coming. I felt that. I was surprised. And it was closed, you know.
Two and a half, two and a half hour period.
So we also, which a lot of this money is coming from Friends of the Library, but we're doing fiftieth anniversary stuff starting. It starts this month and it will, we're doing an event or a, an event or challenge every month, all the way to December, to commemorate the fiftieth anniversary. I do encourage you, if you haven't been, there's a display in the library that has all the stuff from when the original building was built. That's interesting.
Before the origin, before this building was built.
So we have stuff going on. Some of it corresponds with summer reading program, which will be kicking off, obviously, this summer. But some of them, like we have music performance planned, Christmas float, ice cream social, different things each month, basically, to try to, you know, commemorate the fiftieth. We have buttons, we have T-shirts, bags, stuff that, and Friends of the Library has been helping out with that, too. So that is something.
Does it increase during the summertime when school lets out the children and all coming in the store?
It does. It does, especially with summer reading program because, you know, obviously during COVID, we didn't do that in person. So I really think this year we probably have a, we've had a really good attendance at, at things like the Leadership Forum. That's been well attended. I wasn't at yours. How was yours?
It went well. It went well.
And so we're partnering on that one. But things like that, we've had a lot of, a lot more, we have a lot of homeschool groups, too, that come in. You know, story time, all that stuff. But we are ramping up programming for especially spring and summer. And now with the new director, I'm sure we'll have more. But, yeah, we actually do track all those stats and I can put those together for you at some point. Or I can send them by Sean, since he's our liaison. But we do have stats on everything from how many books get checked out, how many computer games should get checked out, how many interactions we have every month. I mean, we have all that kind of stats and showing how it compares to same quarter last year and even the year before, usually. Jill tracked all that stuff. So it's been very helpful with us trying to grow.
Did you want to speak on your CIP? Sean filled us in a little bit yesterday. Do you want to confirm that?
Yeah, that's fine. I, I do apologize, Sean. I totally realized. I forgot to invite you to the board meeting this month. So show up, it's my fault. I totally forgot to put him on the email chain. We actually met last night. We introduced the new director and this morning I was like, I forgot about Sean. But the CIP request comes as, you know, we're coming off the needs request we did previously. And you guys, you know, obviously saw that building versus renovating was not going to be much different. In fact, the final, you know, what came out of it was basically, it'd be cheaper to go buy land and build somewhere else than renovate the one we have with the roof lines and the way everything is laid out. You're really trying to, it's, you're spending so much money trying to reconfigure and fix. So you're still talking eight to nine million. So that we don't think is very realistic. So CIP is Plan B to go back to the same folks we already worked with because they're familiar with the project. They did the conceptual design to begin with. If you guys remember, the conceptual renderings were pretty good. I mean, as far as the quality of them, obviously, they're not full blueprints, but we want to go back to them. We don't need to do another need study. We already know the answers to that. But we want to try to come up with a more sensible way to get more space, whether it's pushing out, you know, a room on the back, maybe side or back. But we definitely need more space. That's the one thing we just, with programming, you know, we have programs and we'll have eighty people show up. And we've got people in the hallways, outside, like, we can't fit in that room. Our room is smaller than, like, half the size of this, half the size of what we're sitting in now for all of our programming. So it's difficult. The room is used almost all the time. There's been times where we can't even use it as a board because it's booked. I've, we've had to meet two or three times in this room just because, like, it's used that much. And it would be nice to be able to use it for library functions and not, I mean, it's great to have for community functions, too. But as a library, we need space to be able to do programming and functions of the library. So it's very busy. It gets used a lot between clubs and presentations and local things. But it would be great to be able to have meeting space and programming space where the kids can do activities and all that stuff. A lot of times currently, when we have music performances or, you know, larger events, we have to host them off-site, whether it's at the Presbyterian Church or somewhere else. Because we just don't have the space for that. It also has been sort of limiting us on what we can do. You know, we have ideas for things, but then we have to say, you know, we can only sign up ten people for this activity because we don't have. And if we did a woodworking one, one time or something, we just don't have the space. So it would be nice to have that multi-function space with some study rooms and a larger space.
So you do, we are keeping the thirty-five thousand in the CIP. You heard different yesterday, Sean?
Yeah, I was confused. I thought that was part of the other, the next phase to the building. So this is something totally different.
The thirty-five thousand that we put in for this year's CIP is for a plan to add in addition because we, we took away the nine million dollar request for the new building. Does that make sense?
They took down and they want thirty-five.
We took the nine million out because we realized, like, that's not, we're not gonna, that's not gonna happen. We just are not gonna get there.
Just looking.
So we would rather Plan B and get a new conceptual drawing for like one and a half, two million. And we have, we also, the new director has a ton of, she comes to us from Lewis Ginter Edgar Allan Poe Museum, and also those both have libraries. And she has a ton of fundraising and grant writing experience. So she already wants to hit the ground running, trying to get grants from private, state. And we have some other stuff in the works that I think we will be able to use. And so that's sort of the plan, is come up with something that's more realistic, where we can add space for a much more reasonable amount of money.
How much dirt do you have behind the library? I mean, how much, what's the footprint?
That's almost all ours. What you see Parks and Rec practicing on is library property.
I think the library goes all the way.
It goes all the way.
To the woods.
I'm not saying we're gonna build all that. That would be the nine million. But, um, yeah, it's all ours. It's just currently, oh, an agreement has worked out where they can use that, since it's not being used, I mean. But we do own that property. We don't have much on the sides, obviously, you know, between head start. And obviously, we wouldn't even give up our parking lot. So the back would make the most sense. And if you look at what the conceptual design was on the original, like, eight, nine million one, it was mostly off, it was almost all to the back and then reconfiguring just some of the, we were gonna make the entrance on the side instead of the front. So it was just reconfiguring that. But we would not do that. We would keep the entrance where it is to save. We wouldn't really reconfigure a lot of what we have, not knocking down walls and stuff. I mean, we might move books. But this is basically like an addition, not a whole reconfigure, you know, not a total renovation.
You will need parking, too, or is there enough parking around to make it work?
I think we're good on parking. I really do. Our parking lot's actually good size for, we probably have one of the better, yeah. And, and because we have the streets.
These conceptual designs kill me, Darryl. We paid forty grand for them to tell us it wasn't feasible to renovate the library we have. And now we gotta pay another thirty-five grand to tell somebody how to put an addition on the back. It's like, why does government?
We need to start utilizing our own people.
Yeah, why does the government run with that? I mean.
It just doesn't make sense.
Can Darryl look at it?
I mean, yeah.
Figure out how to add an addition.
If, if you will, yeah.
Within their scope of work.
I mean, you can call a local builder. And talk to them. I mean, it's not, it's not like it's rocket science.
That's what I wondered. I mean.
It's, it's very simple.
Someone told a lady who does it, and I mean, she had me a set of plans. You would have told.
I mean, we could, we could switch it and do that. We could use it to get plans done.
Yeah.
I mean, what is your goal?
I mean, you can design, build, I mean, you can, there's all kinds of things you could do, but you just need to tell an architect, this is what I want, or somebody that can draw plans. Anybody can do it with CAD on a computer, except for me.
Well, we have some local people that's pretty good at drawing up plans. And I mean, they, they stay basically on average for these small business. But I know it involves getting money for this, but what's your realistic goal to time-wise to you at a whole?
The way things work.
I know it depends on somebody giving you the money.
I mean, I will say that the friends are really pushing. I mean, they, so, I mean, we are, too. I'm just saying. It would be lovely to have it within the next five years.
That's what I think. Five years. That's, that's, that was the number I had.
I mean, it'd be lovely to have it next year, but that's not realistic, not in government timeframe, not in government timeframe.
I mean, the reason I'm.
I can't even do my house in a year.
We can find a way in the near future to come up with this money and say, this is a timeframe you're working in.
And I'm all for using the money to get plans if that's something that we can do. I mean, plans for that should be able to be done. Usually, plans should not be more than fifteen percent of the cost. Or at least in my form, in my line of work, that's usually what, I don't do residential and development stuff, but like environmental engineering stuff, it's usually maximum fifteen percent. So technically, you know, we might could get, I can ask around and see what we think we, if we could do something with the same money. Instead of like just conceptual.
Yeah, I mean, the way government works just kills me. Like, you pay money to see what it's gonna cost you, to pay more money to see what it's gonna cost you. It's like a.
Well, part of it's obviously because you don't want to pay, I mean, it would cost a fortune to go get plans for an eight million dollar building. So that's, you, you know, you kind of got to figure out where you stand and what it's gonna be.
But if there are alternatives, if you just want a meeting room on the back, I'm sure somebody can.
Yeah, if, I mean, does the county have?
Pretty simple.
Do, does the county have?
They're, they're doing it right next to Dog State right now, you know? Doug Edens, Quarterfoot, laying the block today.
It's not like you're going out in a piece of woods down there and putting a brand-new building in. That way, you gotta go through all the environmental issues, et cetera, et cetera. You know what you got here.
Yeah.
And they know. And your local contractor, he's got connections and.
Yeah, I could definitely talk to Darryl and see like what, what we need to follow to.
Well, I think that's an asset the county has that we don't utilize is Darryl.
Yeah. And I honestly wasn't sure if that was even something they could do.
I was gonna say, well, this has come up before and he's really cautioned against his ability to be, from a time standpoint, to be able to do that. And also that you need certain licenses.
That's kind of.
I'm not asking him to draw it or anything like that. I'm asking like.
Talk to him about it.
You know, this is what you need. It can be done instead of paying thirty-five thousand dollars.
Plus the forty?
Yeah, and you've already spent whatever it was and then you can go down and.
That's good.
There's price, design. I mean, there's tons of them around here that can draw them up. They do.
I mean, usually you don't pay somebody all that money to draw a house for you. It's a part of the.
You tell them what you want. This is my footprint. And they draw it and you say, okay, I want to change this, this, and this. Not a problem. You tell them what you want. This is my footprint and they draw it and you say, okay, I wanna change this, this, this. Not a problem. Okay, here it is. Go. I mean, it's really no different than a residential design. I mean, you could have sprinklers and stuff like that, but it's still all the same. It's still.
So I know what happened in the past, and this might be where I'm at a disadvantage because I wasn't here when they did the original one, although I know Carol was. Um, originally, years and years ago, probably nobody here was on the board. Nobody here was on the board, no. Um, the library put in for, do you remember what the cost was? Couple, a couple.
What, nineteen ninety-nine? I think, was this library?
No, no, no. I mean, since then, for the original addition they wanted to do years ago.
I don't know.
The library did put in a cost and I don't know, remember what it was, but let's just pretend it was a million dollars. They put in and said, we want an addition, we want the money. And the answer back from supervisors was, you have to have a plan, you have to have the plans, you have to have a conceptual plan. We're not gonna prove anything until you have that. And so that's kind of where that came from. It's like, okay, we gotta go get a plan.
That is the smarter approach.
So that's kind of why we felt like we had to do that instead of just saying, we want three million for an addition. So that's kind of where we were kind of stuck in the middle was, cause then it's like, well, how do you know you need that much? Like, show us your plan. So if you're good with me using the money to get plans, if we get it. I'm, I'll be happy to do that. That gets us way a step further than we already are.
Well, I'm for keeping money local as much as possible. To help the local people, the community.
Something like this design built would be your friend.
I don't have friends up down there. I got elected for it.
But anyway, I was just giving you a little history. That's kind of where, where that came from was because originally they did propose money for an addition back before my time. And it was sent back saying, you've got to first put in for plans. So that's kind of why it is where it is.
Alrighty. Any more questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you, Tim.
Can you bring us up to speed on what's going on with Stefan now?
She just gave the, um, state code and said there are some increases that we could make to the, that we're all on it, um, to the. Uh, kind of permit fees, we choose to. That's simple as that. Yes, please. I'd love to have you.
I'm glad how you do. There you go. Don't be no need to wait.
I don't wanna hear it. She rearranged the furniture?
I, I think I'm trying to, yeah.
I'm good.
He said we can get started. He's just gonna be right back in a second. So, um, well then, then let's hold. Change that.
We shall wait.
Yes.
I was just glad when I found out they had a lifetime deal and I didn't have to come and pay for whatever he here.
Oh, I picked up a lifetime fast, too. It's well worth it.
Did the board get? All three of the attachments that I sent in?
I think so. I'll pull it back up here, but that looks like what I think I saw in the packet.
We call it colorful county report.
Yeah, I think it's there. I'll, I'll, I'll be on it in one second and tell you. Which side of the week Dexter's celebration?
That's fine.
Josh, this is a, a big change from running the BAPs.
From BAPs, yeah. Quite a change, huh? I had a change from BAPs to V D Hs to media again, so.
Well, they're lucky to have you.
I'm happy to be here, so.
Oh, you could have answered some of our questions about the bus then.
I could have, yeah.
I was gonna say.
You didn't seem.
I was a transit director there for four and a half years.
I forgot the stream.
Should those be put up on that?
Yes.
Uh, yes, both the, all, all three of those are in there.
Thank you. Taylor's usually pretty good about sharing what I seen. Josh is pretty good about sharing.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We try.
I will speak to that. I still have that, um, real rustic data. That real rustic stuff still needs to share with us.
We usually update that every year, even though it's not much to.
Well, I know, but remember they said they sent it.
Yeah, we.
That go with you?
Is it ever on a plant soil, but he's one of the.
Instead of some kind of error, but still, we should.
Well, you can come straight from the field.
Oh, yeah. I have done that. I ain't no tendency to smell.
You can track it in because our recycling guys track in mud every single day.
So we're ready, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're ready. I was, I was watching that and we were getting something up and running.
She's pulling it up, I think. I can go ahead and get started while she's pulling it up, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Alrighty. Well, thank you all for allowing us to come before you today. Um, I'm Sharon Harrop and I serve as president and CEO at STEPS. I know you've met Sean Roser before, um, when he spoke to you guys in my absence and thank you for the grace you showed me that evening. Um, before I get started, I just want to do a shout out. Dexter's sitting right here, but also to Deborah Adams. Who is the individual citizen from Notaway that was elected to serve on our board. So you have two reps sitting on our board. Um, and we're.
We're a mega, not, not away.
You're okay.
If you read the front page of the Courier.
You know where she's from, don't worry.
I don't know where I am. I think that's the, the frightening thing. Um, but yes, they are from Amelia County. I will make sure and not make that faux pas again. Um, thank you, guys. You guys have been loyal supporters of ours. I've been at STEPS for thirty-three years. And you have invested in the job training services and currently our community action work. So thank you for that. Um, we're asking you this year for level funding, which is fifteen thousand and twelve dollars. We've not done an increase in about three years. Um, for a number of reasons. One, we work very hard to secure outside funding, whether it be state, federal, local grants. Um, because we also know that you guys have tough decisions to make. So we try not to make it any more difficult than, than we have to. However, this year there is one caveat, and that is in the event that we step into the domestic violence and sexual assault world. Um, we will be circling back and asking for consideration of an additional amount of money for that. Right now it's too early. Um, we simply are using the money that you've already allocated to us to do two of the services that we promised that we would step into. We just don't know how the domestic violence and sexual assault work is gonna evolve, um, in our region. Um, I can share with you that we have a local donor that will be donating five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase. The former Madelins House Domestic Violence Shelter there in Farmville. Um, so we will at least have ownership of that building. So that in the event every other sort of thing falls into place with Department of Criminal Justice and Virginia State Department of Social Services. We will be poised and ready to operate a domestic violence shelter. So we're very proud. That there is a local donor that sees and trusts us well enough to invest that kind of funding in us. Um, when I was talking to you earlier about not asking for an increase. One of the things that we are really proud of is we brought in almost six million dollars in additional funding. Over and above what county governments have allocated to us. So we leverage y'all's money extremely well. Last year, we served two hundred and ninety-six individuals. That's an unduplicated count. You know, sometimes you'll have people come through and say, oh, we provided fifteen thousand services. We feel like we need to be completely transparent with you and let you know how many citizens walked into our building and received services. Now, we operate in something called a whole family approach, which means with an individual that walks in, we do an assessment to see if there are other services. That that family unit can, that would be needed. So with that, most of the times we find that individuals receive at least three additional services. So at that point, there would have been touch points of over six thousand services that we provided. Um, wages, we paid three point five million dollars in wages last year and of that a hundred sixteen thousand and something was paid to Amelia County. Amelia County residents. Um, we also invest, um, in facilities here and in vendor payments. The Head Start Center that we operate here in Amelia is right up the street from you guys. When I turned down on Dunn Street today, my heart stopped beating. Because I saw a rescue squad and fire trucks. I was like, oh, wow. But it was like a show and tell kind of day for our Head Start Center. So that made me feel much better when I walked in and, and nobody was panicking or bleeding. Um, we provide thirteen services from a wide variety of services and that was one of the handouts that you guys got. Um, workforce and economic development is the cornerstone. We've been doing that since nineteen seventy-eight. And we provide jobs for people with disabilities, senior citizens. We also work closely with your social services department. So if you have TANF and VIEW participants, um, that need services, we also want to thank you for supporting our shredding operation. Um, between our recycling center and our secure document shredding, um, our thirteen folks with disabilities. Were able to shred about twelve hundred tons of material. So a ton is two thousand pounds. So between our recycling center and then our secure document shredding. We really did keep a lot of paper out of folks' landfill. Um, I'm gonna pause right now and kick it to Sean because one of the largest growth areas that we have had. Um, is in our housing arena and Sean serves as our VP of Housing. So I wanted him to give you an overview of what's going on with our homeless citizens. And I know that you guys, um, had asked for data, um, and we've got that to share with you again today also. Hey, Sean?
Thank you, Sharon. Good afternoon. Um, we, uh, in, in, in our normal day-to-day operations. We have, um, four housing programs. So the, the first one is our energy share program. And we get a lot of calls for assistance for folks who are, have a disconnect notice for their electricity. And, um, we can pay up to during the heating time, we can pay up to six hundred dollars per household. Uh, to assist with, keep, keeping them from being disconnected, cut off and, and in the cold. And in the summertime, it's a year round. It's up to three hundred dollars during cooling season. So, um. We maintain that program and then our, uh, Virginia Homeless Solutions Program. We're doing emergency sheltering. Right, right now that's exclusively in hotels, um, hotel sheltering. And we've, uh, we'll talk for a minute about some of those. It's an alternative that we've already talked about previously. But in, in our sheltering, uh, program, we also, um, offer those individuals and individuals who are on the street. Our, our rapid rehousing services, which is first month's rent in deposit in order to get into a rental property. They have to be approved, of course, by the landlord. We do an inspection. Um, to make sure everything's functioning and safe, um, fire detectors or smoke detectors. And then, you know, if it passes, then we can get them into permanent housing. And then the, the last program is prevention. And these are a couple of types of cases. One is if an eviction, uh, notice has been filed before the court, we, if it will, the landlord will work with us. And allow the person not to be evicted. Um, we'll intervene and help catch up, up to six months worth of rent. The caveat there is that you, you have to have the income to sustain it after we're done helping you. So there's no need to come back in a month or two and have you evicted anyway. Um, so we, we're pretty much a stickler about that. Uh, then we also do the first month's rent and deposit for people that are. The term generally used for is couch surfing. Going from place to place, you know, they have income, but they don't, you know, they need help getting established into an actual rental. So those, um, those are our, you know, base housing programs. We, um, it, we get a lot of calls, um, from all the counties. With considerable requests, um, for those services. So certainly, um. It's a high demand, um, across, across our region.
Is there any resource in Blackstone at Pickett? I know they had some housing, they had some people there last couple of years, but is it, is that a resource for some emergency housing?
It's not. Um, what we're finding with Pickett and, and they are very honest and open with us. But they don't want that level of traffic coming onto the base. Um, especially now with some of the extra security protocol that's there. Um, we, we are working on a plan. Because we really would prefer not to do hotel sheltering. Um, and that would be a partnership that we're developing with Virginia Supportive Housing. It's a group that is based in Richmond. But they do this type of work across the state. Um, we have asked for consideration for some of your second pool of ARPA funding. Um, and I'll just put that out on the table and Sean can follow up. Um, we did get confirmation from Notaway. That they will fund seventy-five thousand dollars out of their second pot. Um, Notaway is the second highest utilizer of services. We've asked Prince Edward to consider a hundred thousand out of their second pot. They're the highest utilizers. And what we're asking for the other four counties is fifty thousand dollars. Um, because we feel like if you look at.
Let's pass these out. You, this is data that you had requested, Mr. Easter and, um, the board had requested to see around county. By county youth.
Yeah, and that, what you're describing is exactly how I try to think about it, Sharon, and, and see that the fees are more commensurate with usage.
Exactly, with a base, with a base of fifty. Um, because even with the Virginia supportive housing model. What we're hoping to do is build, um, small, um, apartment type units. And then on the first floor, we are hoping to have those units be shelter, emergency shelter units. So that's really the plan we're working through. But the numbers you see here, you'll see that Prince Edward by far is the highest utilizers in both fiscal years. That you have in front of you. And then Notaway falls in second. So you've got the other four of you sort of jockey. For position from year to year, and there really is no way to try to, to decide how many of who is gonna come from each county. So we heard you guys loud and clear.
This is really clear. That's, that's awesome. Thanks.
Um, when we first asked, you know, each of the counties that was asking for two hundred thousand. And in all honesty, that was, we were hoping to just have a placeholder with you. While we were working through some of the details that we would have, the initial model was gonna be like tiny homes. Um, but what we found is that there is no operational funding available to support emergency shelter in a tiny home environment. Um, most of what you see across the nation is really faith-based that is supportive of that. So we had to drop back in punt. And that's really when we found and developed the relationship and getting ready to execute an MOU with Virginia Supportive Housing. Since they are the experts, um, we will also be taking to the table, hopefully, the ARPA funding in the second round from each of our six counties. Plus, we've got a, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars center grant, the hospital system there in Farmville. And we have a private donor that's also pledged two hundred thousand. So if, if all of the counties will fund what's being asked at this point. We will be able to walk to this new project, about seven hundred thousand dollars, and we'll continue to, to find resources to do that. So thank you for that consideration. Um, we are. We are realistic in our expectations and what you'll learn about us and Taylor's known me for probably all thirty-three years that I've been at STEPS. Is that I'm not gonna promise to do something that we can't deliver. And in all honesty, we had to backtrack from, from the tiny homes. It just was not gonna be something we could pull off. So we have pivoted is what we're calling it at this point. Um, did you wanna add anything?
Well, I just think if, the main point we wanna stress is that we're looking. is that we're looking at the operational capability in these changes. So, that when we went into partnership with Virginia Supportive Housing, they asked us to consider a 60-to-80-unit apartment building. And it would be in the town of Farmville. But they felt, you know, based on their history with operational costs, this is about the size in units that you need to have in order to break, you know, cover your operations in it. So, we took that, the Homeless Housing Task Force, which is made up, you know, of multiple stakeholders across the region. You know, we took a look at this and agreed, you know, with their recommendation. So, that's what caused the pivot in the change in course. Because we, while we appreciate your support, we do not want to rely on you for operational costs of any magnitude of significance. So, that's the reason. And they have, you know, they all apply for the tax credits and the things necessary to do a lot of the other construction pieces. They'll be able to, they've got experience in property management, manage the facilities and the rentals, so to speak. And then, we'll be able to just stick with the services piece, you know, around the social services that need to be delivered to the people that are still for the homeless, you know, but as the Supportive Housing model.
One of the things that I'm proudest of, I think, of all the work that we do at STEPS is that as a community action agency, we are not singly focused. Whereas, like Habitat for Humanity is all about building homes for people to live in. Piedmont Senior Resources is serving the senior population, whether it be nutrition, transportation, and other services. But as a community action agency, we are mandated by federal law to do a needs assessment every three years. And then, every three years, we sort of calibrate and assess, are we doing the right things for the needs in our communities? Do we need to pivot? Do we need to shift? And that really keeps us extremely nimble. I remember, I think we were actually in this room when Judy Jones and Taylor and I sat down and said, "Do you really need to be in Head Start?" And I appreciated Taylor and Judy asking those questions because at that point, that was a huge turn for our organization. And I'm hoping now that everybody will agree it was a good decision for us to go in that direction, but it was by far the most painful cleanup and stand-up that I've done in my 40-year professional career. So, they really made sure that I was determined we were going to get it cleaned up, and we did. But I share that with you because it really does change. Like, when we're sitting in front of you in two years, we may still be talking about housing, and we may still be talking about job placement and job development and Head Start, but we may have added another service if that is indeed what our community needs. And our community needs assessment right now, we're doing it in cooperation with Central Southside Community Hospital. So, we're drilling not only into what causes, what are the roots of poverty, what causes people to find themselves homeless or not able to feed their families and their children, but also ways that we can shift that paradigm, to be able to put things in place. We do not do handouts. And that's the piece that I think everybody recognizes with our organization now. We will help you stand up, but we're not going to support you indefinitely. And yes, everybody can have a crisis that would cause them to fall off hard times. And we want to be there for that safety net, but we're not there to do it over and over and over again. You guys wouldn't want that for your own citizens. I wouldn't want it for my family members. And that's just sort of our position and how we operate. The other piece that I hope that Dexter and Deborah can relay back to you guys is that we are efficient. We are lean. And when I say lean, I mean, there are five people on our executive leadership team. And I've got Sean that takes care of housing, and we've got workforce development, and we've got early childhood education. There is no extra fluff going on anywhere in the system. But we feel like that's where we should be. We should be as lean as we can be to still be able to do things in the most efficient and effective manner. And the other part is that I want you guys to know that at any point in time, if you needed to send Josh down there to see, "How do we do our books? You know, how do you do your financial reporting?" Our books will always be open to you. So, just know if there's ever any question, you know, we would give Josh access to that if necessary. And then, you all also received our annual audit and our 990. So, between those two documents, I hope you will rest assured that the money that you invest with us is well spent on behalf of yours in a sense.
I don't think I've ever heard anyone imply even otherwise.
Thank you. That means a lot. So, any questions? Sean, did you have anything else you wanted to share? So, any questions for Sean and I or Mr. Jones over here? Let me see. You didn't have muddy boots today.
Well, we appreciate the numbers.
Absolutely.
That the percentage-wise that Amelia is getting out of this and what we need to give back to y'all. Because, you know, we had some come in here and say, "Hey, everybody's paying this much money." Well, are everybody getting the equal amount of services or back for the amount of money? And that does mean something because, you know as well as we do, we're in a tight economic times, the whole country is and everything. So, we're really trying to squeeze them dollars as much as we can and get the big thing we can out of it.
Absolutely. We understand.
Because some people might get their feelings hurt, but we're not trying to hurt nobody's feelings. We're just trying to.
Make the best decisions you can.
Everything we can.
Well, and that's one reason, you know, our board sees this before I disseminate it out. But that's another reason we want you to know what services are your citizens using. And again, know that this is unduplicated. So, even though you may have one citizen that receives five services along this continuum, they're only going to be counted one time. So, I think, you know, that's the other piece to just sort of keep in your mind. And, you know, I would love for you guys, I know you have a lot on your plate, but each of you received one of our annual reports. We disclose and hear a lot of information as far as our Head Start budget. And we also try to tag, sort of tug on your heartstrings by introducing you to some of the people that work here. Because if you ever have a bad day, at least in my chair, we have them frequently, I can put on my muddy work boots and go out to recycling or go over to the Shred Center and actually work beside people with very significant disabilities, people that would have every legitimate right to just stay at home and not work. But the 13 people we employ in those two sites all make at or above minimum wage. And they work through cold, rain, mud. I mean, it is, it can be nasty work at our recycling center, but there's value in work. And I think that's what we like to instill in everyone, that a job truly can change a life. Any questions for us? Well, thank you for your time today. I really appreciate it.
Did they ever find a guy sleeping in the truck behind Hardey's?
No, we never did find him.
Oh, I was going to say.
I called him Joe, and my wife and I kept looking for a red truck at Hardey's. And I did see one.
Yeah, and he's referring, we do a point-in-time count, and it's usually the coldest-nurden night in January that we go out and beat the streets to try to find homeless people. And there was a guy on a red truck.
I was looking when I came from the latest meeting office and see that truck sitting on.
Several people told her about it.
Kristen Jackson tried to find it that night. And then, we were actually told there was one behind the STEPS building. So, I went up there that night and didn't see anybody.
Yeah, I told my wife, "He named Joe." I was looking for Joe coming home.
Just look for the red truck.
I saw the red truck.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
I'll see y'all at the end.
I think it's a 27, but I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Bye-bye.
I had a question before we go to the next one. The church is not coming in. They figured that showing on their request is not to figure in the book. Just wanted to clarify. Showing 412 on the book and you sent me her page, and it's 406. Let's check and see what is the difference.
Okay. And you're, just to be clear, you're referring to the Department Expansion Summary, Section 3?
Yes.
Okay. I will take a look at that.
Okay. All right. Will you present, Kim?
Yep.
Is Kimberly and Kent coming or?
No, Kimberly is in training today, and I don't know about Kent. He's here just for the squad.
Kent's next.
Yeah, he's going to be.
He's normally part of it. That's fine.
Yeah.
We're glad to have you with us.
Relax. That sounds ominous, doesn't it?
No, it's all good.
No. Okay. Like I said, you guys tell me what I need to do and.
Maybe you just start to give kind of give some overview. I mean, we know some of the changes, but just what's your base and what you're looking for from a reference standpoint?
All right. In our request letter, well, firstly, I'm Kim Smalley. I'm the operations officer for the squad. And our request was for $109,160, 109,160, to produce a balanced budget. And that takes into account the $16,000 in the 44 Life Funds as well as the $17,000 that we will get in the personal property tax. I guess you call it refund, rebate, whatever. We attached a copy of the budget. I think the one thing that, one of the things that I want to say is the squad has had about a 35% increase in calls in the last 10 years. Just in the last 24 months, we have had over 1,900 calls. Also, if you look in our budget, one of the things that is in there, I believe it's for $8,000 per truck per year for maintenance. Well, I hate to say it, but we have gone to $16,000 on one truck a long year to date. So, that figure is, like I said, we've used up all of our maintenance funds on one truck, and we've still got five trucks or four other trucks. And I'll be happy to answer whatever questions you have about that. I do have, we will be submitting a request for, let's see, I believe $65,000 of the funding left that we're supposed to be able to draw on by June 30th. So, we're going to be submitting that request pretty soon because otherwise, we're not going to be able to meet our bills this month. I am more than happy to pass this around, its invoices just from part of February and March. ESS alone is, let's see, I believe it should be around $140,000. So, insurance premiums and the like. So, if you guys would like these, I'll be happy to leave those with you.
That 109 was your local support. Look, the 109 figure you gave, is that what you request for your local support?
Yes.
The ESS has kind of been shifted into another line item.
Right.
Under the merchant manager. Okay.
Right. Now, that's, my understanding is that ESS has the contract with the county now, that they're no longer employed by the squad. Am I correct with that?
That's right.
But I understand we're still paying them because we're still receiving the revenue recovery.
Yes.
Up through, I believe, it should be through June 30th to give the county time for the county to get set up to take over for the revenue recovery.
Yes.
So.
Is this combined on here, though?
Huh?
This is for next year.
Yeah, this is.
So, July.
Right. Our, yeah, our year runs calendar year.
I see ambulance rescue services at 1.182 million, but I don't see volunteer rescue squad as a separate line. I'm wondering if they're combined, what?
There is two budgets currently right now. The volunteer fire department, ambulance rescue services. The piece that we're taking over right now is located ambulance rescue services because the GLs have not been set up for that. But we do intend to have those two separate on the book.
So, it's combined currently and will be separate?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. That's what I figured. Okay.
Yeah, but let's see. Our February bill for ESS is $87,360. And I want to say it was 70-something for.
What I've seen during the course of this project is it's about $80,000. It averages for.
Right. It's averaging about $80,000. And like I said, this was under 77 to 80 for that due. Yeah, that was actually due 3/2/23.
What's the percentage of recovery, David? 60%?
No. When we started, it was about 40.
40?
And with that, and I'm not stealing your thunder, I'm just.
No, no. By all means, this is.
Change in the billing agency would possibly increase the return amount. And to do that, that's what prolonged the process because the county had to get their own agency number, a DMSA number, to do the Medicare number to receive those forms.
Yes.
So, they're going to get 40% of that.
Probably. And that brings me to a whole other thing, a conversation that I need to have with somebody, but it's not about budget stuff. It's about some Medicare data collection that is taking place for this year that we're figuring out, so.
It'll never, it'll never quite wash itself out.
Right.
But hopefully, if we can get to a, above a 50% recovery rate on billing, it would get us closer to paying for the ambulance service.
Right. So, like I said, it's, this past couple of months, we've, again, it comes down to truck expenses have been great. Our VFIS insurance has amounted to close to $30,000. That is payable this month. Or, actually, there's a check for that, I think, sitting on the desk, waiting for tomorrow's signature. It's expensive. I mean, that's all I can say is when you look at what it costs to run the trucks, just so you know, the state is currently reviewing the materials and supplies that are required to be on transport ambulances. So, there will be some changes there, probably effective next January. There will be, so there will be some additional, I believe, pediatric supplies and some other things that we don't currently have on there that we'll be having to supply. We still do not have, we've got five ambulances currently. We still do not have our fifth ambulance stocked. In other words, when we use it, when we rotate through the five, we've got to pull everything off of one ambulance and put it on the fifth ambulance, which is fine unless we get to the point that we need the fifth ambulance. And we also have some equipment, our monitors, our, those cost, our latest quote was just under $40,000 per. per monitor. Uh, we bought three of those at once, and they have an expected probably another three years of service in them. Uh, so we're, uh, we've actually just recently applied for a grant to start trying to replace those and stagger it uh, some, so that we're not hit. But anything you guys can do for us, and, and like I said, I am more than happy, I've got all this stuff on the computer, I'm more than happy to leave this. Uh, so you guys can, you can look through it uh, just to see what's happening. The equipment or the, the ambulance situation, I don't see that getting any better. Uh, we've currently got, I think it's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars on unit six, which is the one that we are putting sixteen thousand dollars into. Uh, new transmission, I forgot what the two thousand dollars was for, and then we found out another six thousand for yet another problem, and uh, it has been out of service for quite a while now, and it's still sitting at the Chevy dealership.
How old is it?
Uh, I think it's about fifteen years old.
That's probably, you need to go back twenty-five years, and you'd have no problem.
Right.
Fine.
Go back a twenty-five, or one still runs.
The, the big issue, and we've been looking, uh, at some alternatives, uh, but the big issue is chassis are not even available until next January. We've already talked with Goodmans to try to, you know, per the county request, to try to put in, that go ahead and put in a down payment and put in an order uh, on those, and they said it will be January at the earliest to even get the chassis. And.
Government got a preference on all that.
Mm-mm, everybody's wanting an ambulance.
Looking forward. Everybody's.
Everybody's.
Everybody's wanting an ambulance.
It is with your preference.
Yeah.
It is, that is with the preference, and then after that, it takes.
What kind of chassis are you looking for?
Just, it's a van, can't.
Think they're looking at international?
I think Goodman, uh, we were.
A ton, ain't it?
Got tons.
Did three fifties, four fifties?
Well, our latest.
Ton, ton and a quarter, ton and a half.
We've got four of them are comparable to the three fifties. The latest one is actually a Ford four fifty chassis.
That's a ton and a quarter.
Yeah.
A lot of them forward's got them.
And they've had issues with that. The issue is, is not a lot of, and I, I'm not talking of.
No, go ahead.
The issue is not, you gotta carry it so far to get service. And it's a Ford, so it breaks down more regularly than anything else.
I've heard comments made about Chevy.
Was the one that's.
One of us.
Chevy dealership for the last four years?
Chevy, yeah.
Not there?
That was fifteen years old.
Don't matter. I don't mind.
It's still a boat guy.
Lee, I'll tell you.
Well, I don't know, eight stayed out of service for two months.
Yeah, but I think they are, but.
What is that, Dodge?
No, eight's a Ford.
The road tractor friends, they tend to hold up, I mean, I think Chesterfield about switched them off.
They had.
And they got, and I think what we're looking at is a smaller scale than what you see.
Right, right, but then they run a million miles, you know, the chassis.
That's the trouble.
Right.
They need to go upper scale instead of down, because you get, you gonna pay a little bit more, but you getting a whole lot more.
Right, in the long run, you don't have the downtime.
The road, the roads are different out here for.
Yeah.
Right, we're hard on vehicles.
Great big vehicle versus.
We, we are very hard on these vehicles, the, the weight that they carry. I will be more than happy to pull an ambulance around now and take you guys out in it, and you can see Taylor has driven them.
We know how the roads are out here.
Yeah, we live on.
Oh, heck, I, I'll put you in the back of eight, you know, the crew has to take Zofran before we get in the back of eight, because it makes it sick. I'm serious.
Unfortunately, I think that's some people have a real problem riding in the back of that thing.
I was one of them.
Somebody that's sick, it doubles it up. One of the things that came up on this eighth, though, and it wasn't Ford, it went, it screwed up. Goodman's figured out what was where the area was, and it was a dealer thing. So you stop the presses and you send it down to the dealer, and then it gets in line down there. I think David will remember, I guess it was in November, one day, the top phone rang and said, there's been another breakdown, we've only had one ambulance in service. We had four of them out, and one of them was stopped, brand new, sitting down at the Ford dealer.
Yeah.
I think that the conversation's sort of gotten around, circled around, and maybe we'd be better off if we bought power plants or power trains, whatever, the, the units from Goodman's, and then they could work on everything, and we wouldn't have to worry about sending it out to the, the dealer.
Right, right now, it's getting, getting back to six, like I said, we're just now putting sixteen thousand into a truck that has two hundred and forty thousand miles on it, and fifteen years of service as an ambulance in this county. We're hoping to stretch it to three hundred thousand. Uh, I was just talking to Buddy Thompson today, that, that we're hoping we can get that, that truck to last us to three hundred thousand, but like I said, we won't get a chassis until January, and then it'll be another two years before they get the box complete and get it ready for delivery, so everybody's looking three years out. The other thing I've been warned about is what's happening with dealers now is they're taking orders for chassis and writing out contracts, and the prices are continuing to climb, so when the chassis comes in, they rewrite the contract for a higher price.
Yeah.
Well, one thing.
That, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I, I mean, we're looking at, we typically used to pay, what, about two hundred and twenty-five thousand per ambulance, now it's looking more like four hundred.
But, and I know eventually you, you're not gonna have a choice, but please, don't buy an electric one anytime soon. You think you got it, now you just opened up a can of worms, big time, or one of them.
You may go have an option, obviously.
That's what I said before I started, it's gonna be at that point.
It's cold.
It's.
Lord help us.
Well, I would, I would love to put whoever regulator makes that requirement, let them go sit out on a scene with a bad.
No, they're in Washington.
I know.
They have them over here right now.
But, that's, don't get scared.
I don't, we all could be getting it.
Well, I.
It's like, it takes that long to get one.
Tractors.
Some are getting the paper.
Remers. Like, you have to do it like.
She said they get ready, put the chassis, reserve a chassis. They go do that on a front.
Yeah.
And pick up your rest later.
No, I live down by the Barter Brothers, by the way, so, yeah.
Phone and say, hey, I got a. Five hundred dollars as soon as I see.
That was out of the.
Then the clock, you know, ticking on to come see you.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying to Dix, sorry, Tom, that's a lot of what's caused these things, so, so many people did that.
Yes.
Arca funds.
Yeah, I think so.
And we got it backed up.
Yes, we got, we got that one, they got it.
Is that the Ford?
Yeah, back in December, probably.
That's the Ford.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe that's the one, went to Florida to get it.
Yeah, but like I said, uh.
It took a year.
Yeah.
To get that one, year and a half, maybe.
On, on this, you know, we've put in that, that budget request for the hundred and nine, and, and already, as of right now, we have already spent an entire year's worth of maintenance for two vehicles, on one vehicle.
Take your pay, I want to shop right now, too, I hate to see the bill.
And, but, yeah, right here.
No, I don't got my truck.
Oh. I was supposed to say, bills in here.
I don't wanna know what the bill's gonna be to fix this.
You know, my other concern is that you know, that's just the vehicle side of it, is when we're talking about medical supplies, those supplies continue to to escalate, we do look for deals where, as a matter of fact, I even told the fella at Goodman's that if you can talk to Chevy and get them to give us a break, I will go down and teach CPR, stop the bleed to their, their folks for free, in, in return for a break.
Yeah.
You know, trying to do something to alleviate some of this stuff, and we're, like I said, you're looking at monitors which, as David and Taylor both can tell you, are absolutely critical.
And the sad part is the state and federal legislating all these regulations that fire NMS have to keep up with.
Don't cost them nothing.
They're not funding.
Yeah.
They, they love putting it on paper.
No, they're washing it, costing us, then.
Right, and.
Localities.
And this equipment does age out, and we're.
Their time life, right?
Mm-hmm.
Even though it still works at so many years old, you have to get rid of it.
Well, what they do is they don't cover the maintenance and repair on them after a certain age. And we'll use them as long as they work. Uh, but you know, we also want to up our game so far as what we do to provide for patient care, something as simple as fluid warmers. Yeah. Uh, and, and by the way, hypothermia due to, uh, trauma is a, a killer, especially for elderly population or the very young. Uh, a fluid warmer's five hundred bucks.
Over days of putting it on, you know, on the warm.
I'd appreciate some hot fluid if I needed to.
We'll take it.
So I, it, you know, and, and so when you're buying four of them to stock four trucks, that's two thousand dollars. Actually, a little bit more than that.
You got two.
You start selling.
We got two.
Yeah.
We selling donuts.
What kind?
Uh, it's the cream.
Look, yeah.
Yeah.
When?
Uh, do, the same day that we're having the stew with, and don't ask me that day. Kimberly keeps up with that. Kimberly tells me where I'm supposed to be. But anyway, gentlemen, uh, we, we struggled to get this down to a hundred and nine thousand, and quite frankly, I don't believe that's even enough. Uh, so... What questions do you have? We're trying, we're trying.
I see it every day, so I, I know where you're at.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, we, like I said, I, I honestly, you know, just offer volunteering my time to try to get the squad a discount, I'm not the only one of us that's doing that. Uh, Buddy Thompson, when he goes through and we're doing orders for supplies, he shops around to try to find the best deal on it, uh, even down to it, you know, saving twenty bucks on something. We will try to do that, so it's not that we're just blow, you know, it's just expensive out there, and I will be happy to sit down with any one of you and go through exactly what we use, how we use it, and what it costs us.
I don't think any of us are disagreeing about, about those things.
It, it's absurd.
It's, it's.
It's absurd, there's limited money, though.
Oh, absolutely, the county's growing.
They did agree to that bad.
Citizens, citizens expect greater services, this is a great example of greater services, there was a law enforcement, we've talked, we've talked about the ja, jails and all those things, and ultimately, the those services they need come back to cost on the citizens, you just manage it as well as you can, which.
Right.
You're doing.
And the usage of those services is going through the roof, it's almost exponential.
Yeah, some of these calls on the thirteenth, which was last Tuesday, did any of those go to mutual aid?
I would have to, have to ask Ryan if.
I, I, I don't think they did, I wouldn't have asked the question if I thought the answer was.
Yeah, I, I don't think.
Volunteer crews, combining with the two crews that were paid in there, they got seventeen of them handled, and I don't think there were any significant delays. That's just one day.
One day. One day.
During the middle of the week.
Yeah.
On a Tuesday.
I mean, yeah, there are some days that we may go twenty-four hours and not get a single call.
Right.
And then there are some days that we just absolutely get slammed.
When it rains, it pours.
Sure. Yeah, it, it, it just, you get dead slammed.
And that's, it can be handled if your timing is right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The timing is important enough where it proves time to get a Richmond.
Correct.
Delivery of patient to get back, it's, it's really just a, it's a busy day.
And the type of service, whether it's just going to someone's house, or it includes everyone being transported to the hospital.
Yeah.
You don't go accidental.
Yeah.
It's like you see the ambulance westbound coming up three sixty, the lights on flying because.
Yeah, they're running.
They're coming back to get another, another one, because you see it all the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we had three or maybe four accidents one day, a few weeks ago, it was about three, four weeks ago.
And they usually come in clusters.
And they were, it was like an accident, thirty minutes later, another one, hour later, another one. It just, all, all during the day, dur, you know.
Yeah.
During work hours.
We never know when that's gonna happen, but we do have a number of folks in the county that call us when it is not necessary to call us.
Absolutely.
Uh, we have some folks that don't call us when they should be calling us, and then when we get there, it's some, well, it's either too late, or it's something where it's.
Really bad, right.
Body parts to the wall uh, kind of thing, and, you know, there, there are no good answers for that, I do not see us, given the steady increase in our call volume, I do not really see us being able to go back to four ambulances. Uh, and like I said, we're talking about one of them, one of the five that we have right now is not gonna make it in three years. Six is not gonna make it three years.
Well, not only have ambulance, you should gotta find people.
People to staff them, yeah. Uh, and we're, that's a whole nother conversation, we're working on that, our training officer, uh, is, uh, doing some things we already have in the works for Bright Point to bring in a class, EMS class, EMT class this fall affiliated with Bright Point, we're gonna be looking at going through, uh, VFIS to pull in to see if we can't get something going this summer. Uh, to, to try to, but even then, I think the last time we had a class, we got one EMT out of it.
And the demands for EMTs is going up, too.
Right, and it was eight thousand dollars for the class.
Right.
Yeah.
Let's give a shout out to Kimberly Smith, she's watching the thing, and she has reported that all of those calls were handled by the county then, then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Yes, so...
Well, it's only gonna get worse with future growth, and we have a ton of them that's back to rock and roll like it, we hope it does in the near future, and future growth and all, this, this problem is gonna only magnify itself, because it's, it's just part of the cycle of life, I mean, it's only gonna.
Yeah, but nobody ever sells one of these slightly used. So I mean, what are you gonna do when you need one, and we're stuck in a three-year waiting list?
Yeah, we, we have had a couple of folks that have been checking for those, uh, types of vehicles. Uh, we also, uh, have had a person that said he is willing to spend ten thousand for an SUV type vehicle, that the squad will fit it out to be a quick response vehicle that we could use to get an ALS provider at least to seeing and providing patient care, because literally, an ALS provider can set up an ICU in a person's house. Uh... And, and so, uh, we are looking at alternatives, and we're certainly open to any suggestions that any of you may have. Uh, so far as getting more volunteers, what I'd like to think is if we started beefing up and offering some really, uh, I don't wanna use the, uh, sexy, but attractive types of gizmos to work with, cutting-edge kind of stuff, or at least things that are comparable to what you see in some of the larger metropolitan areas, like a vent, a ventilator, uh, being able to, to do blood, being able to do some of those things. My thinking is, is being able to do that, that that might attract more volunteer talent, I don't know, David, what do you think, I mean, if you've got folks.
Resources are there to give them the tools to work with.
You know, would that be something that makes, you know, like, we've got a lot of professional medics that work for other counties that live in Amelia. That work for other counties that live in Amelia.
You gotta look at. Call load and demand.
Exactly, so.
I've only seen blood given on a scene. One time in thirty years, but.
It would be a regional, we would, it would, it would be regional.
Yeah.
Uh, and recently we did some training and we had some folks. One individual that came for the, uh, T E C C training was actually from West Virginia. We had from surrounding counties. Uh, the training officer for, uh, Palatan. Is very eager to work with us. To do training and and maybe start looking at something on if can, and can we reduce our supply costs by. Uh, combining orders in some way. Don't know how all that would work out, but. Trying to get a bigger volume on those kinds of things. So. We're exploring stuff, but we're. Away from having anything in place.
Okay, that, you understand. What is the average life, do you know, of a ambulance in Chesterfield County?
Two hundred thousand miles. I couldn't tell you the years.
And then what do they do with?
They put them in a reserve fleet.
Okay, when the reserve fleet has so many, what do they do with?
Then they sell them on gov deals.
Yeah, they're out there.
And you know they have state of the art stuff compared to us.
They don't come and quit.
They don't come and quit.
Well, you can still stock them.
Yeah.
You can still stock them back because you still got to stock them anyway.
They.
Yeah.
They're pretty well done.
Well.
I think when they go, you see, you see like metropolitan cities, short runs.
Yeah, they dog them. If David drives them, I wouldn't want them.
Well, I was trying to find the one that he didn't screw up.
Yeah.
It ain't that.
No, I, it's, ambulances have.
We need to win the car drive.
Uh, you know.
Run wide open on their song.
Oh, yeah, they want to let them run like a NASCAR car.
Uh, you know, and then you put that, a lot of times you have a chassis that is really not made to carry the weight and bulk of the box.
Yeah.
Uh, and all the equipment and then by the time you follow up a lot of people in there. But anyway.
Try them. If I ever thought to find us, maybe we could find a good used one somewhere. Save us some money.
Yeah, but, uh, what questions do you have for me and have I? Provided the information that you needed?
I'm good. I think it's been a very good discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for you.
Well, thank you. I do have something that I want to ask because I'm not sure how this works. Uh, I don't know, and and this is not about the budget, but there is something that has come out. I don't know if you're aware of it. The Medicare ground ambulance data collection system. Have any of you heard of that? Right now, uh, and this could have, this could affect funding. Uh, matter of fact, if you don't turn the report in on time, they. They start cutting your Medicare reimbursements ten percent. Uh. We are in group or year three, which means that we are supposed to collect. Data. And the data is huge. It's all expenses, all reimbursements. Eh. Put it this way, all of this paperwork right here with the exception of. And that's just a portion of it. Uh.
Is Kimberly aware of that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah.
And and in fact, I spent six hours on this last night during my duty shift. I s- I sat in the office for six hours going through this stuff, trying to get a handle on it. And actually, uh, I did confirm that we cannot start reporting the data until twenty twenty-four. Uh. The question that we have at the squad is whether or not, a- and by the way, every ambulance service in the nation is having to do this reporting. And I'm sure there's some of them that are large enough that are probably gonna actually have to hire somebody. To pull this stuff together for us. It's very, very detailed stuff. Uh. Is we're not sure what kind of effect it's gonna have. Because we're only gonna be billing for half a year. The squad itself. And then that's gonna turn over to the county. So I don't know at this point if someone from the county is going to have to report the second half of the year or not.
I'm sure Kimberly and Kat will. Get it figured out.
Well, and and I'm part of that.
Yes.
Figuring this stuff out, but who, uh, you know, outside of Kimberly, is there anybody in particular? Uh, other than the people that Kimberly knows that we should be trying to bring, uh, I'm gonna work on getting an answer.
Wasn't the new reporting system gonna take care of some of that? Maybe?
Maybe.
Okay.
They are just now collecting data from the first two years. Uh. Years one and two collected data starting, I think, twenty twenty. They're just this year able to report. Uh, I went in last night and actually tried to open up an account to start reporting and they denied me. Uh, and said that it's too early. It's too early. We collect the data. And and by the way, this is the data data collection instrument. And it even gets down to if we don't own our building, we have to calculate what it costs the county to run our building. That kind of stuff. What they're trying to do is demonstrate that Medicare does not reimburse at a high enough rate.
I'm sure we can get answers to any of them questions. Although we can, that can just easily be said without all that data because we know that.
It's the federal government, yeah, I know, I know.
I mean, that's a simple.
But just an FYI, guys, that's, uh, that's something that's on the plate. We don't even have to start reporting until next year, so I'm not too concerned about it at this point. We've got plenty of time to work through and figure out what it is that we need to do. Uh. But we we will be having to pull data from any vendor that we need or any vendor that we use, including ESS. The trucks.
Yeah.
The billing agency, any of that, uh, anything that we get from the county and then county will have to help us with. It's a mess. It is the federal government collecting data.
Well, it's no different like deed out from these plates.
Oh, I.
They had a target by June. They still can't accept them.
Yeah. Yeah, that ain't gonna happen this year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Kimberly. Kimberly Smith reports again that we are on the Goodman wait list, hoping to hear something by June.
Okay.
On whether or not we get an ambulance.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay.
They're.
And it will save a lot because it's here in the county.
Well, you guys know how to get in touch with me either through Kimberly or.
Supply and demand.
Just let me know.
They don't have boxes neither.
They built it all. Well, you can get, you can get jackets in.
They're custom.
You know.
No, I mean, the box that goes on the chassis.
They get it safe. But you can re- hey, three times you have to do.
Same chassis.
It's a boxes paid for the first time, you can use the box three times.
Right.
They refurbish it.
Right.
Use it three times.
So you just get a new chassis.
Get a new chassis, get a refurbished box and save money all along. Steph?
Good evening, gentlemen.
You sir? Yeah. I know we're behind, but.
Taking an official break?
I'm at five percent. I'm a bit glad we're safe.
How you doing, Kent?
Very well, sir. How are you?
Good.
Still had a productive day.
Mm hmm.
How are you? What they always say here is in public, it is public.
Yes.
Ain't no Krispy Kreme. Don't keep scarring at it. I'm hungry. I'll offer Krispy Kreme now. Get the things right out the oven down there. Pour that sugar. You good to go for half a day.
That is a little treat when you leave Chippewa damn hospital.
We know you stop.
See that sign?
Picture hanging inside. Number one customer of the year.
Yeah, it ain't got me. They show all good when they, when they're hot. I ain't gonna lie.
It melt in your mouth.
You get a discount when you're in the box.
No.
I'm just waiting. Everybody ready? Head to break?
All right, Kent.
I appreciate y'all making time for us. I'm not sure exactly where you want to start as far as reviewing the the areas that that fall under our scope. As far as our our legacy. Type, uh, uh, budget, we did ask for a a slight increase in our office supplies as well as our. Uh, education budget related to, uh, an increase in staff for us. Uh, there's also a request. That is new from our department, uh. It's for incident management related activities, things such as. Being able to buy supplies on the fly during an event such as having to open a a shelter or things like that. We have no. Bucket of money. We've never had any money for that type operation. It would also be used in case we had an issue where we had to. Provide staff for an event. Because, uh, volunteers were not able to to take care of that. It would not be something that we would draw money out of. Unless it was needed. So that is a a new item in our, uh, our legacy part of our budget. Um, there were a couple of, uh, I think Josh referred to them as capital outlay type. Items, uh, one of those being the vehicle for for our department. It was originally supposed to, or the plan was to replace it in twenty nineteen when it was ten years old. We were asked to postpone it, which we did, and then we've been dealing with COVID for the past couple of years. And we're hoping that we can get that replaced this year. Um, and everything else as far as our budget, uh, the scope of our budget is all related to the assumption of the. The, uh, the EMS portion. That we're gonna be handling and that's, um. Just over one million dollars that we're asking for for the contract staffing. And, uh, there's also the relatively smaller amount that we're going to be looking for for maintenance of the building. That we, uh, have assumed from the emergency squad. That'll be under our budget. Most of that should be just transferring it from what the squad had asked for in the past over into to our lane. I'm not sure exactly what what Kim had presented to you all, but the the just over one million dollars is what it will take to. Continue the contract staffing as it is right now going forward.
So what you're saying, that's exactly what I was trying to get a handle on, and it's not super clear to me from what we have, um, wh- when you considering all the, because the money's.
I understand.
But does someone have now or can get? What's that summary of additional funding that related to EMS that's being asked for when I, when when we. Cancel out all the the movement of money? I, Josh.
We may be able to get.
Get that to you as soon as I.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's all right, yeah.
The. Eh, and I should also mention along with that one million dollars that's gonna be moved. Into our budget to pay for that contract staffing, we will be assuming. The billing portion of this. Which, again, the squad has handled that portion, so we will be generating revenue. It's not going to pay for itself from the revenue recovery, but we will be generating revenue. It's just an estimate now, but we're going off of the 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 figures that the squad has been. Collecting over the past few years and the estimate is about six hundred thousand dollars that we're expecting to get back in revenue.
What is the, um?
That's already.
Our our paid crew rates, um, how how many crews, what what are we up to right now as far as?
Right now, there is one twenty-four seven, three sixty-five crew. There every day, all day.
Okay.
There is one additional crew that's there twenty-four seven over the weekend. And there is one twelve-hour crew that is there during the week. And volunteers are covering basically week evenings. For the second, for that second group. So we do not have two. Full twenty-four seven, three sixty-five crews. That's based on. The call volume that we have right now. The.
That's, that's a huge increase over. Two years ago when they were just running. What sixteen-hour shifts or whatever, basically just.
It's, it's steadily going up. The the call vi- the call volume. Stabilized or potentially went down a little bit during the the year of COVID itself, but it's. It's continuing to climb and it's, it's not going to go down. It's, um.
Two big changes in the last two years. Had to bring that second twenty-four seven crew in on the weekends. And the rate went from twenty-eight per hour, I think, to thirty-five.
Yeah.
That was, and that's the, the squad came in at that point in time and said, we're, we've got, we've got to have some additional help. When that contract changed.
It's based on. I think the figure you said thirty-five dollars per person. Per hour for all the hours that they cover. And that's for. Non-holidays. There's an increase for holidays.
Holidays can be just as busy as any other.
All right. When we get to that threshold of hiring our own at least. To staff one ambulance versus paying outside source. How do we, what, when do we get to that threshold as far as money savings? There there's gotta be a point where it's cheaper for us to hire.
Hmm hmm. I think, I think what we're doing for this first year, this, this will be the first year that we're. Going down this path. I think we're safe continuing the contract that we've got right now for the next year. And during that year, we'll have a better. Feel for. Exactly how much it's going to cost us and exactly what additional things we could achieve if we hired our own people. The contract staff, they're, they're there to do a particular job that they're contracted for and and they're relieved.
That's.
They're, they're flexible, but.
That's what I'm thinking, as far as.
There are certain things that they're not going to do.
They're there for one job, one purpose versus. County staff that would be there at.
Correct.
Your disposal.
You would have some flexibility, but. There's a cost, I mean, there's a cost for that. But I think over the next year, that is certainly something we need to explore to to figure out if it's more cost efficient. We obviously want to do what's best for. For the county, for the taxpayers. We've got to get the nine-one-one calls answered.
Yeah.
That's, that's our responsibility. We've got to do that. Our concern is, is how, how, right now, at least my biggest concern is how often we're having to call mutual aid. From other counties to help. Cover our calls. And there are other situations where the incident might not go to mutual aid, but it means one of our, our. People that we're serving are having to wait. A half an hour or longer for an ambulance because they're on their way back from an earlier call. Yeah.
How many miles on the Tahoe?
115 in that neighborhood, between 115 and 120.
When you get rid of it, where's it go?
It would go back into the fleet to Darryl, if public works.
What years?
Oh, nine.
Well, like a few years ago, we chuggled a bunch of them around. We give, like the landfill got a very much upgraded vehicle over what they had, I think.
It doesn't get nearly the mileage as patrol cars, that type thing, because they're out there.
Roughly 10,000 miles.
That's about, that's about average.
Mackenz is an emergency response vehicle, so it still falls in the priority category versus.
Yeah, I'm just loving what you can get out of it.
Right.
That's what I'm looking at. What are we gonna do?
I don't think it would be good for an emergency vehicle going forward, but it certainly, it certainly still usable.
Usable.
Absolutely.
That's the question.
Yes. Was there any other? I know we're all a little confused about exactly how this is going to play out with the EMS portion, but did anybody have any other questions?
I think it's going to be fluid for at least the first six months of this, because this is a new thing that we're doing. I'm starting to think by January, we would have a handle on which direction it's going.
I would absolutely hope so. I know the initial thought, underlying idea was that it would, it would be cost neutral, at least to begin with. But we also know that if you look over the previous years of how the increases were being provided to the emergency squad, when it was in their hands, you can see how it kept climbing. And I don't anticipate that that continual climb is not going to continue. It'll just be an hour bucket instead of.
Exactly. It's neutral to if it was with them, but it's going to climb regardless of whether it's with them or us.
Yes, sir.
I completely agree.
Outside.
Yeah. Which is why, I mean, why I asked what I did for Josh, that Josh will follow one, not because I disagree with that, but because, you know, we're looking, honestly, there's not been much of anything truly optional discussed yesterday or today as far as budgets go. It's constant increasing of services that are used by citizens, which is what we're here to provide services as a government agency.
I feel for you all having to make that decision.
I'm thankful that our rescue squad is, it's going as smooth as it is because there are some other counties where boards have been placed in some extreme binds over these changes.
What are you done playing with?
To the tunes of several million dollars they had to come up with overnight.
Yeah, this, I mean. This transition is.
So this transition, we're ahead.
I think.
Yeah. Manage it.
So we have to thank them for coming to us.
Yes.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, see, here's the keys, turn off lights kind of situation.
It could have been a much different situation. And as you said, many of our neighbors have been through that. I think we owe them a gratitude to accepting the fact that they needed help and being willing to work with us. They've been excellent to work with them.
Yeah.
It's been a pretty common experience from what I had gathered, some of my meetings on phone with other county supervisors that quite a few times had problems with their.
We're not unusual at all.
Well, we, I mean, we started talking about that as a group, can't let us into the conversation years ago and created a plan for how that would go. Because the growth makes it inevitable that you're going to have to move it from a purely volunteer situation at some point.
Yeah. We should be thankful of the volunteers that we do have. It's the requirements to just do that job or continuing to climb. And that's one of the many reasons that I think you're, you're seeing volunteerism go down, not just here, but across the Commonwealth and across the country.
Well, you're lucky to have any volunteers the way the world is now, because you can't get nobody, nobody to work for wage no more.
I think you have a point there.
Lucky.
That's a good point.
If you're. Are you own, you still, anyway.
You're competing with everybody else that's in the same, it's, that's not going to be.
Right. It's not a magical one.
Correct.
I mean, the county just easily, they don't have a turnout for hiring the day once every.
Yeah.
That's because nobody wants to work. That's going to change shortly.
Yeah, because government just provides everything for you. Let Big Brother take care of it.
They're tightening up on that a little bit.
Anything else?
Did I miss anything?
Got a few minutes update on the radio or anything?
We, we had our monthly meeting with Motorola last week. Everything is progressing. The, I think the big items right now, at least on our plate, are dealing with the, any permits and the zoning issues and ordinances related to the towers that we're going to have to build. And I think from what I gathered, you all as a group will be seeing that hopefully in April. So that will be a big piece of what we are on the hook for resolving, but they're moving forward. They've done their site visits and working, they're working on their engineering. The idea is that they will have what they call their, their found design document ready for us to buy off on this summer. And that's really the marching orders for truly building out the entire system. They've specified everything and now they're working through the details of the engineering. But as of this summer, that should all be finalized other than any things that might pop up. But they're still hoping to have everything built and installed and tested. The testing will go on in their facility in the, probably the Chicago area where they, they will take all of the equipment that we purchased, everything and install it in a warehouse. And probably in the Chicago area. And we will go out and be able to test all the functionality of the actual equipment that we've got. Then they will bring it in and install it next spring with the idea that we'll be able to do our testing by next summer, which is when you want to do the testing, because that's when the leaves are all on the trees. You've got to do your coverage testing when it's going to be the worst situation and that's the hardest. So the idea is to have coverage testing done next summer. And then they should finalize the project next fall. Hopefully fourth quarter next year.
Pretty tight, wasn't it?
Two that we are responsible for, there's five in total in the system.
Just had a thought. Does any of them towers will have like a siren on it or something like that? And they could say about tornado warning was to pop up and could blanket more of the county than just right here?
There are places that, an answer to your question, no, they don't. If that's something that we wanted to look at, we certainly could. There are places that do that. It's kind of falling out of favor and I'm not saying it would be a good idea or a bad idea, but the, the coverage, the, the noise.
My phone?
Yeah, well, that's where.
No steps right there, no service.
That's a different problem.
No, that's your problem, 5Z. You're still in the 5-2. Like yesterday, whatever you was comparing it to.
They had to go up.
That's something that we could look at, but most places in this part of the country, it's just not.
It's a fault.
It's an option, absolutely.
I've been, I've been very impressive. I mean, CTA is, there's no doubt that David's, I mean, they're looking how far of us and they're, they're nitpicking and making sure that everything's the way it should be. I mean, absolutely professional. And Motorola, compared to some of our other projects we've dealt with in the county where we don't hear anything, they seem to be very open, very upfront. I mean, the meeting the other day, I thought, they told us more information than we needed to know. I mean, it's only been two so far, but they're planning great monthly meetings between now and the end of the project, which is great. I, I'm all about giving, you know, getting some information from where are we, what are we doing? So I mean, I'm, I'm real happy with the way it's going.
Yes, we will be, as Sean mentioned, we'll be having meetings every month until the project is over. If you all have an interest in getting more detailed feedback every month, I'd be happy to provide that for you. But it's, it's moving well. I spoke to the, after it was all over with, I spoke with the Motorola representative just offline to ask him how he felt about the whole thing. And he, he felt like we were right on track where we needed to be. He didn't see any red flags or any problems that he was anticipating.
I'm good.
Thank you. Good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good luck to you all.
I noticed a typo on the agenda for school board. They're actually 4:30, not four o'clock, so I apologize for that. That is a typo.
We just got a blank.
Yeah, there's, it start, they're saying, or this says it starts at four, but they're actually starting at four thirty.
They're probably here.
Okay. All right.
Can we shut it down for like 15 minutes or something?
Sure. Sure, I need.
That's the long one.
Yep.
We're good with that?
15 minute break. Good chew.
Oh, yeah.
Take a water and we're down to come back.
Let's go. What do you? Yeah. Well.
Hey, you got more drink?
Yeah.
Actually, yeah.
What do you want?
What you got, the lusa please?
Rummy? That's what we really need these days.
So, okay. I want to tell you this too. I'm upset. Last night was their first, last night was their first PSR meeting. Last night was their first, last night was their first PSR meeting.
Typically take the most conservative route, that being the House proposal. And so that's what we have used to base this school division proposal on. Each year I share with you information about the composite index. Our composite index is point three, six, five, two. And as I'm sure you're aware, that when the composite index increases, that means state funding decreases. And more of the responsibility falls to the locality. Our projected revenue summary is on the next slide. The blue section being the states portion, the orange being local. We also have federal programs, Title One, Title Two, Three, Four, et cetera. And then there's textbook, both local and state, and cafeteria funds. This year, we also have construction funds that we are proposing move forward. This is a one-time biennial budget item. If you've been following our budgets over the last few years, you will know that we have made very concerted efforts to save hundreds of thousands of dollars by streamlining our school division's budget. And we are now at a point where it's nearly impossible to do that anymore. Because we have cut out any thing that we could have. But at this point, we are recommending for the next year to consolidate our special ed coordinator positions. We have one at each school. We are considering one at the elementary level and one at secondary. Instead of having three, we would have two. We also have some budget neutral changes. Our operations department has asked for some summer help to help with the annual auction. We would use any auction proceeds to help pay for that position. We also would be carrying forward the one point three, eight, nine, you know, million in construction funds for the next year that we need to use by the end of twenty four school year. We have two assistant principals at the elementary school. One has requested to shift from a twelve month to a ten month. And so that savings would actually go to offset the salary increases in that area. The Amelia Nottaway Technical Center, we are anticipating level funding requests because they have been funded for two positions in the current year that they were not able to hire. So they're going to move those that money forward to next year, which means we should not see an increase. And then also fuel costs. So we had to increase our fuel line significantly last year with the sharp jump in fuel costs. That we think we can back down. However, the cost of electricity has increased. So we'll basically shifting from one to the other, where there will be a reduction to cover the increase. Now, what we're about to address are the additional expenditures that have been requested either by individual schools or the division as a whole. And the first being a salary increase that is aligned with the cost of living. The cost of living information tells us that that's about eight point seven percent. We are proposing eight percent, which means a step plus a percent would equal eight percent. Health insurance increase.
So I haven't followed the state as closely as you are then. So this seven percent that it's in both the House and the Senate versions, that's specific to schools then? Because we were just talking, okay.
Yes.
That, because we were talking about the, I guess, which had been clearer, non-schools earlier. The five percent being proposed by the state is.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the biennial budget.
Josh, I was just looking to make sure we're speaking the same language, that's all.
The biennial budget had five percent in it for last year and for this current year and for next year. The House and the Senate versions have seven percent. We haven't seen whether that's moving forward out of the Budget Committee or not. I will tell you, the ranges that I have seen with school divisions, there are a handful that are still at the five percent. Most have shifted to seven to ten percent is what we are seeing.
So when they include it in their proposed budgets, if they give it, then that is extra funding what you would expect to receive from this. So the fact that you would be including seven percent versus five, four, three, any other number.
Yes.
Doesn't actually have a direct impact on the local budget because local, local funding, sorry, local funding from the county.
So yes, it could.
Okay.
In that not all positions are funded by the state. So the state funds SOQ positions, which are teaching positions. There are certain positions in a school division, my position. Anything that's in the Code of Virginia, that is a position you have to have.
Right.
Okay, but the Code of Virginia doesn't say you have to have a secretary at the high school. Or, or something along those lines. And so they typically, the state funds the SOQ positions. And then it's up to the school division locality to cover the others. There's also something called a support cap. And if you hear the General Assembly talking about that, years ago, a cap was put on how many support positions of the support positions that they funded at the state level. And that has hindered school divisions. So there's been a large push to try to have the state release that support cap to fund the school divisions more. The next item is health insurance increase. We budgeted for a five percent increase. In the last four years, we've seen health insurance costs come in as high as twenty-three percent over the previous year. We've had a high incidence of health insurance usage for some major illnesses. And, and so that has driven up the costs. However, we expect that this year, we're not going to see that kind of an increase. And, and our staff pays some of the highest health insurance rates in the state because of our rates. So if there's any way that we can help our staff not to have to bear the brunt, you know, that's why we have funds in here each year. The high school needs another math teacher. They have five English. Generally, you have the same number of English as you do math. They only have four math teachers. We need another math teacher at the high school. A career and technical ed teachers. Obviously, we're trying to build in this area to support career and technical education for our students. We have a split position between the middle and the high. We'd like that actually to be one at the middle and one at the high. Work-based learning coordinator. This was recommended by the CTE Task Force. Work-based learning is also now a requirement for students to graduate. And we need someone to manage, working with businesses in our county to help get our students the experience that they, the work experience they need before they graduate. The next one is the division nurse. Our teachers are two hundred day contract, our division nurse is not. And we need to put her on the same contract as everyone else. The high school is the next item. High school counselors are not twelve month. We are proposing one to be twelve month because in the summer in July, we often have students who need transcripts sent to colleges. We have people who need to enroll their students, and so we need to have someone available to do that. The next position is an elementary position for a new program that just recently started called the Reset Program. It is an alternative program for elementary students. On the next page, you'll see a computer technician. We have two people that work in technology in the school division. And, and I'm sure you know what kind of, how much technology has expanded. So we need additional help managing our technology. Elementary school security officer. We have a security officer at the high school and the middle school and feel that in today's times, we need somebody at the elementary as well. This is not SROs, these are school division funded employees. Transportation Department has requested a part-time office assistant. We cut that position several years ago, and they've asked to have it back. The high school, we have a DECA, a teacher who does the DECA after-school program. And there are a lot of additional responsibilities with that. We're proposing a stipend for that individual. At the high school, additional class stipend. So what happens when we need teachers to teach more than their regular contracted time? We have to pay them extra to do that. And so we have seen an increase because of shortage of being able to find teachers. And so we need to pay them, and we've had to come up with that money. We need to add it in the budget. And then finally, you see that general leave day or mental health day. This is proposed as a one-year, one-day general leave addition for next year.
And the cost for that is essentially having to pay for substitutes.
Right, that's right. Hey, on the next line, you'll see, excuse me, the next page. Human Resources Department has asked for additional funds for immunizations, background checks, recruitment fares and supplies. A lot of the things you'll see on this page is, you know, there are increases in costs of everything. The next item is a social emotional learning curriculum that's part of the strategic plan. It's for emotional support and help with students. Our custodial contract increase, you'll see there. This is the increase that, that they've told us that we'll be seeing next year. Code RVA and governor's school slots. The school division committed to having a total of eight students at Code RVA. They committed several years ago. We've been adding two students a year and one additional slot at the governor's school. And this is the additional cost of that. The elementary school has requested some funds to implement a new reading program. And then you also see purchase services for language translation. We are seeing more Amelia residents who's are not English proficient. And so we need to, we're required to have translation services for those parents. And then finally, you'll see technology software. Of course, everything is increased, and this is the anticipated increase in cost of our technology software. We have supplies for operations department. We have an increase due to the increased costs of purchasing repairs and supplies. All of these are under operations. The electricity and water costs, grounds maintenance supplies. The private carriers, we, from time to time, have students who have special needs and attend private day schools. And we know that we have an additional expense for a driver to take a student next year. We've been asked repeatedly, why haven't we been putting school buses in the budget? Because we've been working off of the rental, I guess, of the lease for the school buses. So we are paying down those leases and have added one bus. We really need to have two every year in the budget. And finally, we have a journalism class that will need, it's a new course and will need some supplies. Unbudgeted, these are things that were requested that did not make it into the budget. A mentor teacher coach, which would be a seasoned teacher to help new teachers to, you know, make that transition into the profession. A behavioral support position at the elementary school. We would like to restore the part-time receptionist at the school board office, but that is not added to the budget. And then there are some behavioral support services that are currently funded by a grant that will not be funded next year that are not in the budget. This is a projection of our expenditure summary. Our goal is always sixty-five percent. That's what the state expects, sixty-five percent for instruction. Then you see the cost for transportation, technology, cafeteria, administration, attendance, and health, maintenance, and then textbooks. This is our overall budget proposals for the next year. The total proposal is twenty-six million, five hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred forty-one dollars. We are basing this on an ADM of fifteen sixty-five. We currently based our budget this year on fifteen forty. We have seen way more students than that. So we are increasing our ADM for our budget proposal next year. And so then the additional county funds requested with this budget proposal, assuming the conservative House appropriations from the state would be just over one million. And Mr. Trump and I are happy to answer any questions that you have about the school division budget.
The miscellaneous state construction local funds, do they all go into one bucket?
The, the one point three million we've been speaking of, the construction.
The miscellaneous, the state, the construction, and the local. Do they all go into one bucket?
What do you mean by that?
Is it one, one code, all in one area in your funding? Is it all in one bucket?
Miscellaneous, actually, in the full budget document, if you look in the revenue section, miscellaneous is a subset of quite a few different elements. The state funding is categorized by program. That's actually with, when Dr. Harper presented that slide about the different budgets we're working with or different calculation templates we have. We know the skinny budget from the state has come through, and they're still working off of that. But the Department of Education has not given us fully clear guidelines of how that's really going to impact in that same cap template.
No, what I've asked him is. You show Fund One in your budget, and it states miscellaneous, state, construction, and local funds.
Okay.
So they all dumped into one bucket. All that money's mixed in that bucket.
So in terms of. So the, the state funding, we all consider it Fund One for instructional costs. However, within the state funding line in that section, there are twenty, thirty different lines that have specific focuses and purposes for which they need to be allocated. They are required to be allocated. The miscellaneous, which is, as you can see, is a much smaller amount. That is something that is local revenue from different programs and different rebates and resources. We had to bring that in. The majority of that, that construction, it goes into our local, into our local fund. But that construction money, that one point three, nine million, has very specific costs for which it can be used. So no, it does not go into one bucket where we can simply turn that all over into the expenditures we like. It's allocated for certain purposes, but it's all within local, state, well, state and local instruction.
So what he's asking is, what specifically is in miscellaneous? That would be things like rebates. That would probably be things like the Sprint, the Sprint funding that we get.
And so for some of the examples of our, yeah. In here, see if I can find the exact page for that program. I've got the, sorry, it starts with state in this one. That's what it would be like. I was looking for the, might be missing the page for our miscellaneous, just want to see if that was. I backed up and I go straight to the. I can pull, I can pull up the exact list of what you like on the miscellaneous if you'd like.
Well, I was just trying to figure out if like, I understand if you get money from the state or the federal that's specific to a grant or a specific area, like whatever's required. But the rest of it, is it all blended in together? And then you just double it out from that area to wherever you need it to go, wherever you want it to go? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Well.
Not really.
No, because there are, there are some larger sections, like our sales tax and basic school aid, which are, which are the larger pots in our revenue, which are specific to, which are more to fund, you know, standards of quality position to some extent. But we also, we have in the revenue for the state funding, which is the bulk of that section. We have specific lines for gifted and talented instruction we have to budget for, remedial education, summer school. We have specific, we have specific lines for meeting all of our SOQs for special education, for vocational. There are specific line items to fund the social security payments we have to make for the FICA Medicare payments we have to make for staff that are SOQ positions.
Yeah, but that stuff that's specified for a certain area.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the stuff that's not specified, that goes in with the local funding. That's all dumped into a bucket.
Things that don't have those specific SOQ funded pieces. If you want to think of it as a local bucket, it's, it's.
Think of it that way.
And those miscellaneous funds are things that we try to increase as much as we can. Because the goal of those is, we know what our budgets, what our proposal is to fund the school division. Those miscellaneous funds, we want them to be as large as possible if we can get them there because that does help offset the county's contribution to make the budget whole.
I'm more looking at state and local. Let's forget miscellaneous.
Okay.
So whatever state is not specified for a specific item, it's mixed in with local, correct? And then y'all decide where you spend it to what line item it goes to.
Right, that's why you have the full detail budget. This is a summary, okay? Josh has the line-by-line budget that explains, here are all the sources of the revenue. Here are all the expenditures line by line.
So you're telling me every dollar you get from the state is specific to a certain item?
Pretty much, yes, yes. But you talk about positions, I mean, that's broad. We have two hundred and thirty-five or so employees, so.
I wouldn't say a position, I just meant that money that's not specified to a certain area. Whether it's special education or whatever, I understand grants are, they go to what their grant was about. I'm talking about revenue that is not specific to a certain item. Whether it's, we'll just say round numbers, it's a hundred thousand dollars. It mixes in with our local funds in a bucket. So it's not designated to go to a specific area.
They don't get, yeah, the, the state does not give us an item-by-item budget. Here's your funding for this position you have to have. There is leeway in there with some of their funding they provide us to meet our obligations.
So there's money in there that's not required to go to a specific area that's mixed in with local funding? That's what I'm trying to get to, is a yes or no.
So, and, and it's not as easy as yes or no. Because some, some positions might be funded seventy percent by the state, and the locality has to fund the other thirty percent of that position. So we have reports that we have to do on what the state requirements are. There's an annual SOQ report. And we have to report how we spent certain dollars. Like, we have a report specific to special education, where we have to report specifically how we spent at special education dollars, not just state, but also local dollars. And we have to make sure on that report that for certain amount of state dollars, we have to provide evidence that we've spent a certain amount of local dollars on special education. So those are not, you know, specific to this person or this position, but as a whole, have to go toward this category.
So the state doesn't give you free money?
Free money?
And even the, the local funds are not just a pot, they have to be spent in certain categories.
Right. And, and if we want to make a change within a fund, that's not a problem. We go to the school board, and the school board has to approve those changes. If we're going to make changes between funds, then, then we have to get the approval with the board supervisors.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that works just the way our, our normal county funds do as well. I mean, we show one large income group revenue, but it can't all be spent on anything. It's got specific items, yeah.
Pick and choose what it goes to.
So if the state gave us money.
Not on all of it.
But on most of it, we pick and choose where it goes.
Some, some portions, yeah, so.
But if the state gave us money in certain areas, and we didn't spend that full amount on that area, then we'd have to give it back to the state. So it just depends, it's not, it's not an all or none. It depends on the categories, it depends on the type of funding. And then, of course, we've had federal funding too. And rules of what we can do with the federal funding and what we can't do with the federal funding.
Okay, what you just said. And a minute ago, you said the state gives seventy percent, the local gives thirty.
On certain positions.
Okay, but you just announced that you had X amount of dollars you're going to return to the state.
No, sir.
Oh, in the last board meeting?
No, I'm talking about.
You're going to return?
That was a three fifty-one.
No.
That was a.
That they got in June of last year, and they wanted to carry over.
Yeah.
They weren't returning.
They won't return it.
Lines in the budget, there's certain categories of funding that we have to spend all of those dollars on that category. If we didn't, then we would have to return that money to the state, okay?
I'll say that much of that funding comes with a required local match amount that we have, that local has to support. And those two things together generally might barely meet our requirements.
Okay, so you, you got seventy percent of this from the state in there.
That was an example.
Yes.
Okay, okay. You came up over. So how do you decide who, who gave you too much? Was it the local or the state?
If the state hadn't given us those funds at the end of the year, it would be local, okay? Does that make sense?
No, no, it don't. Because you come up with twenty dollars over. How much of it's going to the state and how much was it local? What makes you decide that the state gave you too much money or either the local gave you too much money? What, what in the, made you decide which one did it?
Well, there's all kinds of rules that go along with the funding, the funding sources.
That's an example of getting too much. This is really hard to.
Well, I think, I think.
I keep, they keep track of what they spend.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And we also, we also.
I do too, I run a business, I keep track of what I spend.
And also, I know that the county and, and the schools reconcile accounts each month.
Right.
Where that, where they track, you know, every state dollar for revenue goes through the county and then is appropriate to us. So really, at the, really where you are, if you're asking about how do we determine what goes where, when we, you know, present a budget and the budget is finally passed by the board supervisors, that's really what that is, is, is an agreement saying, this is what we anticipate getting from the state. You know, this is what we anticipate getting from the state with the county having an understanding, like, this is how much of that should be above and beyond. In that reconciliation process, if we don't have a, you know, if, if we get additional funding from the state, from, we have a large increase in, in our population, that may lead to increased funding from the state. But if we don't ask for appropriation, we don't ask for an adjustment that year, that, that would adjust actually the county revenue. So even though we budget county revenue at a certain point, it's quite possible that the local revenue could, the local requirement could come in lower. Because in the end, that's, we're agreeing to a final number we're trying to meet from multiple sources. The sources are variable, including some of the state funding sources. Sales tax, when we budget for that, that's based off the projection for sales tax they can give us. They can't, they don't have a crystal ball, they can't tell us what is going to happen. But they're doing their best to make an estimate on what sales tax income would be contributing from the state into our school's budget. So when you're asking what happens with, who determines what pot it comes from, we're putting together a plan for what we think is going to happen with the best information we have available. That has the, the only final figure we have is where our current spending goes to. We have to monitor multiple things. Dr. Harper mentioned the special education SOQs. Their requirements in, for, you know, something called maintenance effort for special education. Where we have to, there are calculations to make sure we meet or exceed our previous year's spending on special education. We're not allowed to cut that budget drastically without good cause. So we have to meet those state obligations. And in the end, our whole, our goal, one of the reasons we budget at, you know, this year's fifteen forty, we increase it to fifteen sixty-five. One conversation we have to have is we always try to do that conservatively. Because we always want our budgeted number for state funding to be lower. because we always want our budgeted number for state funding to be lower than what we think we're going to end up with. So that the locality isn't overstressed beyond what they've committed to, what they think they actually can do. And that's what the figures we had to present to you are based on.
I, I think some of the discussion that it came from was when you asked for the carryover last board meeting. I've never seen it split between state and local. That is a first. And what brought that on? I think that's.
Right.
Answer people.
Certainly. So we, we have never seen, um, the state come in the last week of the fiscal year and give us funding. So imagine you have to have your year finished June thirtieth. Okay? One exception, the payroll that goes in July gets, by the auditor gets credited back to the previous school year. So you have to spend any funds that you get by June thirtieth. And the state gives you a couple of days before June thirtieth, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. It is not physically possible to spend those state dollars in that short period of time in a couple of days. So that's why our normal carryover from the county would have been about three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in unspent funds. But because the state gave us those funds in the last week of the fiscal year, the carryover amount, the total came out to around seven hundred and twelve thousand. So we just asked for that portion.
Usually you don't, it's not as clear. It's what seems like the difference.
Yeah.
Because the funds have come to this whole year. This time it was a precise, you got this amount of money in the last week.
Yes.
You know it, where you don't probably know.
That's right. And as soon as we knew that we were getting that, we asked for the appropriation for that money. But the appropriation always goes back to the year in which it was given, which was the previous fiscal year. So in order for us to have those dollars that were given to us by the state in June, we had to make a request of the county to give us that carryover. So what we did was only ask for those state dollars back. We didn't come back to you and ask for the local dollars back.
It's no different than if the sheriff's department got money from state grant, anything in the last week of their budget. There's no way for them to use it. If they'd gotten it six months before that, it would have gotten mixed in. It would have been spent. At the end of the year, you wouldn't be able to determine whose money is left over. But when you get it during the last week, it's incredibly obvious who's left over.
Exactly.
So, I mean, if David asked, to ask it very clearly, that was, that was a good statement. How do you know this time versus before? And so your answer is only because it came in the last week.
Exactly. And we got a notice from the state.
Yeah. And I, and actually I believe, I think with that first request was, was announced, it came with specific language from the state that was in that budget that, that strongly encouraged localities to carry it forward into that previous budget. Yeah. Our budget was settled. We were, didn't ask for it to be appropriate that, the time we wanted to, you know, that carryover appropriation is a separate amount outside of the budget. But there was, they, they knew the position they were putting school divisions in and they were asking, and they made it clear that they, you know, they put us in a bind to make it difficult to work with those funds in the FY twenty-two budget.
And typically you spend the state money first because you kind of have to. Because they hurt us off if you don't. So you spend the state money first. So state carryover isn't even a thing until.
That's right.
They did this and they allowed you.
That's right.
There's an exception to carry that number.
And we have to, we have to verify we met our certain spending requirements, benchmarks that they have for us. And then they allow us to carry forward only spending some big state funds.
Very unique.
Yeah. It's very, it's very, that's the situation they put you in.
Exactly.
And this, this year we have construction funds and, and I guess in textbook funds every year, we have those if we're able to say we can carry this forward. But even that's with stipulations. You have to meet other local requirements before they allow you to carry something forward locally.
Yeah. And, and textbook funds, cafeteria funds by code transfer every year. So we just come back and ask for those appropriations to keep those funds going. But regular budget funds don't. Okay? So yes, this was an anomaly.
Needs to be helped with. Okay. We don't have control over that.
Well, yeah, we don't.
Well, you mentioned the required local effort. How much does Amelia pay percentage wise on that?
It's a formula that's in the calculation tool and it depends on ADM. So if we, like we put in fifteen sixty-five, it's going to be one thing. If we put in this year's numbers, fifteen forty, it changes with every change in the number of students, the, not the membership number of students that you put into the calculus.
Know what it is for this year's.
Josh, you had it on one of your slots. You had that in your slots yesterday when we started.
The projected from DOE?
And what, yeah, and what the minimum. Yeah, you already presented all that to us yesterday.
Required local match?
Yeah, by the Department of Education. Yes, sir.
Can you pull it up?
I mean, it's, the required amount is really low. I mean, it's, it's almost not.
And you have to be careful because you could get in some legal problems if we have more students than that number. In certain categories aren't met like Mr. Trump addressed on the local effort for the special education. And then the school division ends up coming repeatedly to the county requesting more funding.
I'm just, we'll move on while they're looking for it.
Yeah, I have another question. What is the percentage of the total system salaries that goes to classroom teachers?
Classroom teachers.
Classroom teachers, right? All your salary. How much goes to?
So we don't have it broken out like that.
I don't have, if we go, it's something I can do. I don't have that figure prepared.
Instruction, instruction includes not just classroom teachers. It includes paraprofessionals.
Probably anybody's in their top two years. That's sitting in the office across the hallway.
Are you, are you, what you want, you know? Jan, janitors are easy because those are contracted for us. That's a separate section. Instruction, instruction, if you're looking, well, and actually, if you'd like us to break down a difference, that's something I, I can always. I can predict. That'd be no problem for me to answer these questions.
The other thing to understand is that the SOQs do require principal positions, certain administrative positions are required by the Code of Virginia. And some of our positions are also required based on the number of students we have in a particular school, you know? So the number of administrators you have, assistant principals, counselors, all of those things are a function of the population numbers.
Are there certain positions you'd like to see percentages based off of? Is it, if you want classroom teachers, instructional aides? It is in the budget. It's something we can break down. The information.
You know, different field, you know, what it, what the percentage, I mean.
It's just gonna, I think.
Administration of teachers.
The only, the only difference, and I don't want to, I don't want to look like I'm being, you know, like I'm trying to hold back anything because the line by line budget is here. You can actually see, it's just a matter of. Yeah. So then that's, that's where we can, we can literally go through the account and say, you know, hey, this is what elementary teachers, elementary special education teachers, elementary paraprofessionals, teacher professionals, office secretary, our office staff. It's all broken out line by line. So percentages would just be a matter of picking and choosing which ones to put together and putting contrast to each other. We can do that.
I think one point I was trying to stick, not trying to put anybody on the spot.
Understood. Yes, definitely.
The, the increase in budget and the increase from last year and the increases, I don't know how much the county can sustain these, these increases every year. Um, and that's what brought up the discussion for the required locals. And we've done a little research. And I don't know all the rules of it, but I, I'd just like to get some answers.
Right.
We're like one point eighty-six percent of local support to the school.
Hundred and eighty-seven percent.
Hundred and eighty-seven. And you, you take other school districts that's got our similar ADM, Dinwiddie, Nodaway. I mean, they're in, they're one twenty, oh, twenty percent over, forty percent over.
So there's, some of those numbers are not accurate. So the ADM of fourteen eighty-eight, our ADM this year is fifteen eighty-something?
That was their, that was their projected. Our actual, our actual ADM this year is considerably higher than that.
Right.
And that's where some of the projected, those, that projected local required effort, that's something with the calc, with the calculation template. It actually will say what the, those projected figures are. You can change that with, with that document. So it does, it does shift.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I'm not. I don't know how we can sustain. I'll be straight up.
Trying to figure it out. Yeah.
Right.
I mean.
We're four million dollars over the budget of what we have coming in. And I'm very conscious of to spend, I don't mind spending everything we got coming in. I guess we balanced our budget. We did it right. If we have, if we have steadily increases of one to three million dollars, maybe y'all can tell us how we can sustain it. I don't, I don't see how we can.
I think the irony is that you're asking for a smaller increase than the sheriff's office, EMS, or the jails. None of those groups in the last two days got challenged on their increases. It was all seen as needed government services. Education, which is our biggest thing to prevent people from ending up in jails, by the way, is the one that this board challenges every time.
Have they had a million dollars every year though, for the last how many years?
The percentages increase, the, the percent increases are greater than the school, than the schools have asked for. And one thing I will say about, and one of the bigger challenges, I mean, as well as with the, sorry, with the, um, sorry, with the local, uh, sorry, the increase in composite index. That's our piece two is that with this new biennium, you know, the state through their funding calculations identified that Amelia's financial situation was improving to the amount that the locality could take on more. So part of the increase you're seeing in last year and this year especially is based on a state funding determination that we have no control over.
I mean, when you're, you're looking at a one point three million dollar salary increase and you're only asking for a million. I mean, I don't know how y'all do that good math, but that's some good math.
That comes from the state.
Part of it does.
Part of it would.
See, five, maybe two. So that would be seven.
That's what I'm saying. It's, it's saving us money.
And actually, and actually on that, on the specific line that funds that, that increase, there's a local amount that increases with the funding you have by your, by your, uh, ADM. So every time our staffing increase, every time our student population increases, the amount you have to contribute towards that, if that five percent is not the state saying, here you go, here's five percent for these staff. It's here you go. It's here is a, a percentage of a five percent increase for a small, not for a small, for a, for a minimal staff subset of your staff that is, that has to be matched by locality. And then we have other positions outside that as well. Well, there's some good suggestions coming. People are texting. It's kind of, some of them are saying what embarrassing, embarrassing conversation it is, which is a fair point. But there's some good suggestions several people have made about the board of supervisors perhaps should go through some training on school, how the school funds and budget works. I think that would, that's a good idea. And it's clearly not everyone's got a good handle on how that works.
I mean, we have federal funds with requirements. We have state funds with requirements. I mean, we have cafeteria funds with requirements, textbook funds with requirements.
I was specific to that. I wasn't talking about non-specific funds. That's what I asked. So it's not that I don't understand it.
What Mr. Easter was elaborating on a second ago, a minute ago. The reason I asked you about teachers, to me, they're the most important employees in that school. I know you got to have everybody to make a team. Understand that. But y'all are the largest bill that we have to pay in this county is make the real plane. And although the sheriff and all them has been here and presented their case to us and told us what they want, and it wasn't much questions, they haven't gotten nothing yet. We haven't decided yet. They may get a cut. So they're not being looked at more than the school system because we haven't decided nothing yet. We just want to make sure that our kids are took care of and the people of this county don't get bled to death. Because I want the most vein for that buck I can get. And to me, them teachers is the rap. Some of the other wants and all that is a whole lot of things I'd love to have right now, but guess what? My pocketbook won't let me buy. So I get what I need. And that's all we ask. What do you absolutely need?
This is a needs based budget. This is a needs based budget. The law requires us to provide a needs based budget. If we don't get funded to the level of the budget request, then the board of, the school board has to go back and say, where is it that we can cut? What is it that we don't fund? But there is nothing in here that is frivolous, um, that is not needed.
One thing I'd draw your attention to is that in the list of additional expenditures we have, if you take a look at that list, the, the number of those that are not staff related, and when you're asking about how we're supporting our teachers, we're, if we're your staff, the salary increases, the health insurance coverage, we're adding teachers, we're adding CTE, a lot of, a lot of the requests that are driving some of the increases in our budget, which are things that would potentially have to be cut with, with a lower funding number are things like teachers' smart positions. There are things we have to have. Then if you want to, if we go ahead and look at the other expenditures list, of the things we can really control on that list, you know, if there's some charges, if we're going to recruit teachers and bring in the best teachers for our community, we need to increase some of our, you know, funding for human resources so they can get out to more career fairs, kind of the additional travel costs, additional recruitment costs. We want our elementary students to be, you know, actually some of these positions that when you're asking about required local effort, required local funding, notice some of the positions that we're asking for are things like additional support for elementary students, for, we're asking for, you know, with the, for behavioral supports to those students to make that school better. We're not lining the pockets of anyone in a crazy way, singing people out to say, hey, you're, we're going to do this. It's asking for things that we earnestly believe will make our schools better, which has a huge impact to this community.
Well, I need to get off that subject for a minute because we, the, you still have bus leases, right? We couldn't find how many, how many we have left to pay on?
We have, we have one lease, we have one bus lease remaining. It has an approximately ninety-one thousand dollar year payment. I believe we have three years left. We have three, three fall payments remaining. And that's the thing.
And they're all done. That's.
That would be, that would, that would be the last lease.
Three years still.
And if we could, and if we could be rid of them faster, we would.
We are, we are not leasing passes.
You know, the, the point is, you know, we can be number one in the state of Virginia. But the people I hear in the rural world that's paying these taxes, I hear from them. I want, I want good schools for my kids, but I can't take them with taxes. My taxes, I'm paying after yin yang right now. That's all I can stand. And I'm sick of going, I don't know how to balance it. That is, that is a tricky slope right there.
We're one of the lowest.
Well, we have one of the lowest tax burdens in the city. How do we tell them?
One of the lowest, but tell the people that.
I'm, I'm telling them.
Because they're living out here buying gas and groceries and everything now. And they're saying, you know, that's one thing. I don't want no higher taxes. That's why I moved to Amelia.
Well, a few people say that they do.
As a citizen of Amelia County and a taxpayer, taxpayer, I don't want my taxes any higher than they need to be. However, I want us to have the best as a county. I want us to have the best sheriff's department. I want us to have the best schools. I want us to have the best all the way around.
And that's what people as a supervisor, because I live here too. I don't want to be second best. I want to be. And that's what people as a supervisor, because I live here too. I don't want to be second best. I want to be best.
How old is the bus that has its last lease?
I'm not sure on the exact date, I don't, I, I believe that bus lease is.
Was it a ten-year lease?
I think it's ten years old.
Ten years.
Seven years old.
So, so, so be a seven little bit. I'll have to double-check the exact origination date of that lease.
We, we have a, um, we have a list. Mr. Lynch has a list of all the buses and their ages.
So, that's the type of thing that if there's carryover remaining and we want to release that burden, that's when the county could have that conversation to, we'd have to.
In the past, because we inherited the bus leases, that's the first thing that we had used carryover funds for, was to purchase, you know, a couple of buses every year. Okay? Well, since the only carryover given this year is the, are the state funds, you know, we're, we're looking to try to at least put one in next year's budget.
And as you notice, when, with that budget line item for the buses, you know, we increased it what we thought we need, you know, what we needed to, to, I guess, not add an extra bus to the budget, but simply to say, hey, we know about fifty thousand dollars on a previous lease had dropped off. This was the last year we made that payment, so we took the amount that would cost for a new bus and then said, okay, we don't have to pay that extra amount. We don't have that second lease to account for, so let's offset and start moving in a more responsible direction.
We clarified too, you said you were not confident whether it was ten, you didn't know what the length of the term was.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, we can get those too.
I would just ask, and I would ask the sheriff too, you know, we've asked someone, if there's any way that you can reduce this. I mean, we just got hit, it, it's hard for us to stand here and say praise everything, because we do disagree on some.
Yeah.
We had a big hit with Tyson, and that is affecting a lot of families, and, and they need help.
Right.
But if we spend all of our money here, what do we have left to help them? And I'm not pleading poverty, but we need to get closer to what we have coming in, to what we have going at. And the landfill is taking a hit. It's, it's, has everything hit this year, so I I know what I need, what I want to do to make this work, but.
So what happens when the board of supervisors tells us the number that you can fund locally? Is we go back to the school board and they have to take a look at taking, creating a prioritization of what's in the budget?
I, I would suspect they would go through the same heartaches we're going through here now, to make the same decision. It's not any different on y'all's level than it is on our level, but, but the, the bottom line is, in my opinion, and I'm just one-fifth of this, is I don't, I don't see where the money is at. But we still got time to look and figure, but.
So you're, let me, I think, make sure, understand the assumption you seem to be making is all the costs are going up across the board. I was talking just to them. I was giving him a moment. So you're making an assumption, though, there'd be no increase in revenue for the county, because you're going to keep the tax rate exactly where it is. So that means we have to cut, is that the?
Pretty confident that we've got to keep it at thirty-eight cents. I mean, with the, with this, all the uproar about it, five dead men to say you go raise taxes this year.
Oh, no, definitely.
And with the assessments, the way they got me screaming about.
Definitely.
I don't, I don't see it that way. You may see it that way, that's just my opinion, but we've got this amount coming in.
They keep forgetting the assessments don't increase there, because we just have to equalize too, so.
Yeah, the ones from fifty-one to thirty-eight.
I agree with that.
Yeah, but it's a wash on dollars.
Exactly, so it's not a tax increase, it's not a tax to the point.
But it would be if we went above thirty-eight cents.
Yeah, right, but you combined two, you said it would be the, the reassessment plus that, and it's not.
No, I've been to reassess, with the turmoil the reassessment has caused, and to a tax increase, it would not be.
I guess it's time to start firing people, because we don't want to pay for them.
We're not going to fire nobody.
Well, we can, we can sit here and make silly comments back, both of you, but the bottom line is.
You gotta figure it out.
And everybody can feel how they want. We need to get this closer to what we have coming in. And the, the folks at Food Line, the folks at McDonald's, they don't have any option. They don't have an option to, to choose to make more money. Just, we gotta take everybody into consideration, and I, I would hope the school board would go through the same stuff we're going through. But nothing's final yet, we're just getting information, but I, I'm just spreading some feelings.
This is the same board that did not push back on the jails, jails, and agreed to spend five hundred thousand for them and said, need to, need to keep improving.
They run on their strings, but.
That was not a need to keep on improving. You said they hadn't improved in ten years.
So they're not running much, they're.
Twenty years.
They were irresponsible.
No, it's not irresponsible. How do you figure that?
It's more obvious the percentage.
I maintain my stuff more than every twenty years. They were irresponsible, yeah.
Looks like to me they got every dime out of it they could get. They ran the equipment forever. No different than a vehicle.
And budgeted nothing along the way to be able to maintain, to replace it.
That's irresponsible administration.
I mean, the contractor said that.
That's just my two cents. Like I said, I'm one-fifth of this. That's just my opinion.
So gentlemen, um, I, I just, this is a challenging time all the way around. And I'm going to tell you that next year is going to be more challenging this, than this year. Because the ESSR grants and the additional funding that we have had to fund after-school programs is going to go away totally. So there will be no funding, because it's not in our regular budget to do any of that. It wasn't in our budget four years ago, and we're only able to do some of those things now for our students because of those ESSR funds that expire next summer. Also, just want you to think about this. We compete with six other counties for our staff. And Chesterfield, Powhatan, Dinwiddie, they pay a lot more than we do. And there's a teacher shortage right now. We have a couple of positions that we haven't been able to fill, but our staff has done an outstanding job this year of filling positions. It's only going to get more challenging. There are hundreds of teacher positions across the state of Virginia that are going unfilled this year alone, where they have people in classrooms who are not qualified teachers. So just want you to think about the fact that if we don't keep up with what our surrounding counties are doing, we are going to lose out. And our children are number one, and our staff are number one. And we have to keep that in mind.
And we do, we do. And the counties, one more comment than that. The counties you just named, their local effort is way less than ours. But how do, how do they do it and have the good teachers? Not good, we got good teachers too, but had to hire price teachers. And then we're here paying.
It's the size of the division, okay? It's, um.
Results as well, I mean, my wife's family's Cumberland. They're, we're paying a lot less than the percentage than we are, and their results are atrocious. Prince Edward's results tend to be lower than ours. Nottaway's results are coming in lower than ours. You get what you paid for.
Right.
And honestly, if you look at, I know you just re- referenced Chesterfield as one of the counties you compete with. That composite index that determines state funding, Chesterfield's is actually a tiny bit lower than ours. The state with their formulas has determined that Chesterfield can support less of their local requirement than we can. I can't tell you that's fair. I can't tell you where it's coming from. That's, I want, they have their factors and qualifications. I can only respond to that factor influencing our local budget. So that's, that, I'm sure that their budget is magnitude is larger than ours and much more complex in a lot of ways. So I can't tell you all the factors that go into their local contribution. Uh, their contribution figure being some percentage higher than what ours would be relative to that local effort. But I can tell you that that's, that is at least a portion of that. That's things outside of their control as well.
Small districts have to do the same things larger districts have to do, but with fewer people. You know? I, I want to leave you also with, I'm not sure if this, um, sheet on the CTE facility funding has been shared with everybody, but I did want to share with you, huh? Okay, great, that, I appreciate it. I just wanted to share how we have had savings and, um, you know, are trying to, to help with that, the CIP.
Nine-five, y'all had somebody come up with that number?
Mosley Architects.
Thought you'd said that before.
Yes, sir, that's an, uh, their estimate. Yeah.
Yeah.
We will be happy to get back with you on the percent of staffing by classification as well as the bus list and the length of the lease. Those are the three pieces of, yeah, information that I had.
And I know the, the third thing wasn't asked about, but I think just with that figure of a hundred and eighty-seven percent of required local effort, I'll probably provide you with an update based on some of the figures we have with the, you know, projection for next year. Just to make sure that that lines up the way we're open to, for Tim.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got one other thing to say. We could probably go to most of our surrounding counties and we'd be hearing basically the same conversation we just heard. When it comes to the schools and everything, I don't think we're isolated against.
Oh, everybody's struggling, yes, sir.
Maybe, like you said, Chesterfield or Dinwiddie, somebody's quite a bit larger or bolder than us, but you compare them other counties out there to their schools, they have, just what you said, everybody's struggling and beating their heads against the wall, trying to figure out where the money's going to come from. And, uh, we're not any school, I, I'm not by a long lead. I won't, like I said, everything. I wish we could all sit here and say, here it is, how much you need, there's a check. Can't do it though. Okay? So, let's give a can.
Gentlemen, if you have any additional questions or information, just feel free to email or call. We're happy to provide it for you. And, um, thank you for the opportunity to present this to you today. I know you have a difficult task before you. I have a great deal of respect for that. Uh, I know it's not an easy job, just like it's not easy when our school board has to make decisions as well. Um, so thank you for the time. Thank you for adding us into the work session budget. We appreciate, uh, meetings. We appreciate that. And, uh, please let us know if there's something else you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Those bus leases. I mean, you take three years left rather. That's almost a new bus, for three years. I don't know who did that job.
Do, but we do know.
Well.
I said, I don't know who did it. I know the president bore.
Yeah.
And she went through all that with us, you were, last year. You were here with her, DJ.
Any gentleman discussion? We've done that throughout the meeting, are we good?
Yep, are we going to bring up the, uh, the, uh, penalty deferral on the, is that, are we going to bring that up again, maybe next month or just table that? The penalty deferral for the, for the tax cars. We discussed it and said we were going to talk about it in budget.
Okay.
Josh just said we were going to do elderly and disabled.
Elderly as well. Yeah, I forgot about that one.
All right, y'all want to hit it now?
Okay.
I mean, do we need to put them on the agenda for April's when I'm asking, I guess? I mean, I don't really love that discussion, but.
Well, we're not voting on nothing here.
We're not voting.
Right, right.
I'll go first. My opinion on the, the personal property tax forms, we need to turn them in. We just sat here and seen we have a extended deficit in our budget. Those, but those monies are budgeted into the budget. I mean, they already is a line item in the budget for penalties. And I don't think we all get up, give them up. That's better than taxing every citizen in the county, plus a few citizens that have not responsible enough to turn their stuff in. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I get, I get that. I know in the past we said we, we weren't fans of, uh, wanting to penalize our citizens with fines, because we didn't, we didn't want to fine our citizens with the, uh, fire efforts, so I mean, it's kind of hard to have it both ways, but you know, fine is a fine. They're all frivolous, if you ask me, but I get why, why we need the money as well. And most fines are avoidable.
Those are.
Well, in fact, all fines are unavoidable technically.
I agree with you.
We opened it up. Everybody got anything to say?
I'm not, I mean, we're just saying, you said you would bring it back up during budget, so that's.
All right, brought it up.
What was the point bringing it up during budget, though, if it's the same, I mean, you didn't say anything different than what you said last month, when you were, or was not, just a way to punt.
You'll get to these figures to see how bad off it is.
Did you have information on that, on the elderly tax?
Uh, no, I mean, to my knowledge, nothing has changed on it.
We've got the, one the committee agreed to, that the lawyer drafted.
And I don't think we were talking a lot of money on that.
Yeah, how much was?
We don't have.
No, what, there's no way to know.
To know it.
Yeah, tell people apply for it, man.
Because you don't know their tax, because you don't know their.
Or it could be a thousand, you just don't know.
Yeah.
That's why we put caps on it.
Yeah.
But there's still limitations on the elderly. I mean, not all elderly can.
Page's worth of requirements.
Financial restrictions.
Yeah, so it, it shouldn't be that bad for them. I mean, I would rather give them a break than, if I had a choice between.
I think the way it's set up, it looks like it's a true break for people that need it, is, is the, basically the way it's written. I, I don't foresee anybody, there's no way to abuse that.
Yeah.
I think, you know, you're talking about clearly helping the needy, but I mean, that's.
The only way they could abuse it if they were faking the documents.
Yeah.
Well, right.
I mean, just to, just to be clear, I mean, people do.
Oh, yeah.
Go to some extremes.
They do that.
I mean, they're the ones that can't go out here and get another job and all that, you know?
Right, right.
If you have to, you can work multiple jobs.
What do you mean, work multiple jobs? I thought that's the way we all.
I'm talking two to five.
So elderly and disabled can't do that.
That's right. All right, what else you got?
All I had. We meet next Tuesday to go over it, and you can't be here. If you have any recommendations or anything, can you get them to Josh?
It would be pointless, but thank you.
What time?
Do you still have a vote?
One o'clock.
Yeah, I think that's.
What day does that?
It's on you. Yeah.
I think that is the same day that Tyson, well, they're having a chicken growers meeting at Charlie.
At night.
Farm bills that.
Yeah, I think that's it, yeah.
And they said any, everybody was invited, and I think, uh, Farm Bureau was going to be furnishing a meal for people to meal, whatever. And that they supposed to have some more information that they were meeting with the, at the secretary or whatever tomorrow and Friday, or even, they was meeting with Tyson. It's one of the two, I forget, they said so darn much. But Tyson was only limiting them to about six or seven people to a meeting at a time. Because their main beef was this two-week window, they give them the sign of, of agreement that their lawyers and the accountant says, it's no way they.
It's all by design.
Yeah, they could go through all the legal mumbo jumbo and make a right decision to tell their clients. So they want the governor to call Tyson and extend it to 90 days. Like they say, you know, tax season, so the accountant's so busy and.
There's only one decision they get to make, by the way, it's lump sum or take the pound, there's no reason you can't make the decision in two weeks.
Well, I'm just repeating what they told me.
Oh, as, as am I, talking to the farmer, to chicken farmers, yeah.
All right, workshop adjourned, it's 5:30, I'll get back here next Tuesday at one o'clock.